All right. Hello. Good evening. Welcome to another regular meeting of your West Orange Board of Education. Mr. Calabano.
Bledgely agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
All right. May I have a motion for consideration of the closed and public meeting minutes of August 28th and 31st?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Calabano.
Yes.
Mr. Calabano, I'm sorry. We could not hear you. Can you just jiggle your connection there for me or just re-plug in? No, do one more time?
Yes, thank you.
I'll start again. Mrs. Merkel here?
Yeah. Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Pondercliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right. Dr. Cascone Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. Can you hear me? Ms. Cruftisa?
Yes.
Okay. That's okay. Good evening, everyone, members of the board, community colleagues. Thank you for joining us this evening. Just wanted to extend everyone. Just wish everyone had a good Labor Day weekend, restful and enjoyable with family. What a beautiful weekend it was. Most beautiful as I can remember in recent years. So I hope everyone was safe and enjoyed that time. And we are back at work this week here in the school district. It's been a busy week as our staff has been engaging in professional learning on a daily basis in preparing for our start of the school year next week on the 14th. We have a couple of important updates tonight for you. A couple of reports that are to be presented, which I'd like to introduce. Our first one is from Mrs. Beatrice Henrady, who is our K5 ELA supervisor. And on the agenda tonight is a prospective adoption of the K3 Elementary Reading and Writing Curriculum. Understanding that this curriculum amongst others is of interest to our community and our board. I thought it would be constructive to have Mrs. Henrady come and speak to the edits, the fundamental edits that were made to that curriculum and kind of the process that was followed to do that in advance of the board's vote on this curriculum. So at this time, I would turn it over to Mrs. Henrady. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. I'm excited to share with you this evening the curricular work that we have recently completed. And I must say that I was privileged to work with closely with many of our dedicated, hardworking teachers throughout the course of the summer. And I would like to publicly thank them for their dedication, their hard work, and their willingness to participate in this huge undertaking, especially immediately after closing out an unusual school year. So thank you to the teachers listed and the reading specialists because they did an outstanding job. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit first about our scope and sequence. I want to provide you with a little bit of an overview because this outlines our curriculum framework, and it serves as a window for vertical learning progressions. So when we look at this, you'll see the progressions going down. We start in the early units moving on, and then we begin to build upon those skills. So that's what I mean as that learning progression going down. And each unit we continue to build upon. So each on here, each unit has a timeframe, and it's usually between 20 to 30 days is our estimated timeframe, and that allows for some flexibility, but yes, keeps us very close together. So we're not that far apart. We have our unit titles, and each title has a link that will bring you directly to the curricular units. And underneath those units are our transfer goal expectations, and that's pretty much where we expect the student to walk away with independently able to do. So I want to just go over a little bit with stage one, so you have a little bit of an understanding of that design. In this stage, it specifies our course content, right, and we're doing reading or writing. So that's what would be up there. The grade level is in that right-hand corner, and then the unit number and the title of that unit, and then that estimated timeframe. Then there's always that unit overview. But when we moved into the stage one desired results, this is where this is the driving lane for our curriculum. So when we look at this part, the first thing is we look at the standards, right? These are our New Jersey learning standards. And we need to make sure that the unit is aligned to this throughout, throughout stage one, throughout stage two, our assessment, and in our stage three learning plan. It needs to make sure that we are hitting and weaving throughout those standards. Then in the desired results under that transfer goal, this highlights the effective uses of understanding, knowledge, and skill that we want our students to be able to do independently, right? That's that transfer goal at the end. The enduring understandings, this captures the big ideas that the students must uncover in order to make meaning of the content and the concepts in which they are learning. When we shift to the essential questions, those are the key inquiries within the content area that will help the students make sense of important but complicated ideas and the knowledge. And in the now, in the skills here, the knowledge and skills, those sections that pretty much specifies what the student should know and be able to do as a result of the unit. Underneath these skills, due to the feedback that was received from teachers and really needing to put more of an emphasis around the area of grammar, within there, there's a subcategory for grammar skills. And that then aligns specifically with our standards and transcends over which grammar skills do we want them to specifically hit in this unit. For example, if they were writing a narrative, they might be using that first person, right? In writing in that style. So and then in stage two, that houses where our assessments are, which need to align to those transfer goals and those end results. But I'm going to mainly focus on stage one and three for today. When we look at stage three, right, this is our actual learning plan. And the goal of this stage is teaching all students for understanding, and that's where we need to reach them. And in stage three, we consider the instructional strategies and the learning experiences needed to achieve such desired results. Learning is planned to develop the targeted understandings and the knowledge and the skills identified in stage one. So it should be reflected and weaved throughout. And it's also to equip students for the performances of learning that would be in stage two of their assessments. And that's where we would measure if that transfer goal and that learning was met. So I want to take you a little bit about our revision timeline and process. Last year was my first year in West Orange, and during that time, I had participated in several listening sessions just to gain more teacher feedback and clarity in regards to our ELA curriculum and our program and the needs and the strengths. And in addition, I also conducted informal walkthroughs and instruction rounds with Mr. Mendez to gain that snapshot of in the classroom to see what aligns with that teacher feedback, again, to gain those strengths and areas of growth within that department. So during the 1920 school year, we revised the grades four and five curriculum based off of a lot of that teacher feedback and what we've seen in the classrooms and through the instruction. So our main focus was definitely geared around assessment integration. We did need a lot of work in that area, making sure they aligned to the curriculum units, making sure they were specific to those transfer target goals and that they were able to do in a reasonable amount of time. Some of that feedback had lent that teachers felt like they were teaching for the assessment, and we needed to take that away. We want to measure that's their time to show what they know. So we made those realignments. Some other feedback was having our resources, our concrete resources, our units of study, our Saravello books better aligned to the teaching points within stage three. They needed an easier way to navigate it, and they needed that selection process to be more direct to that teaching point. Another takeaway was the writing process and addressing the writing process. We needed to have our curricular units support the flow of the writing process. The way they were designed, it didn't break that down. So we re-put the headings where we started the brainstorming, the drafting, revising, editing, publishing, and bring those lessons in stage three to bring them through so that there's a nice flow through that writing process and the stages of writing. And the other big takeaway was, of course, having to address grammar. And we did make a lot of addressing to it, but we still have work to do in that area. I'm not going to lie. And we're going to continue to reconvene with a committee. But we started to embed more grammar lessons and skills and vocabulary. So that curriculum was board-approved in June 2020. So the teachers are now just rolling it out, but they were delivered the PD on it at the end of the school year, and there was positive feedback. So when we brought that curriculum to Curriculum Council prior to going to the board in June, Curriculum Council, it was pretty much well-received, and they had recommended that we move forward with those same type of revisions into the K3 and mirror those enhancements because that's what they were looking for and in need of. So that then brought us to the revisions that we included. So to mirror those, we needed to do a little bit more in K3 as far as unpacking the grade level standard expectations and really making sure that those standards were addressing that learning goal and what was being next in stage three. So we really needed to unpack that together as a committee and make sure we had that alignment. One of the other issues from teacher feedback that I had received through the listening sessions was a lot of the curricular units and writing focused on persuasive writing. And we don't really get to that in the early elementary. That comes more at that later end of elementary. And we needed to have more of a focus on opinion writing because that's where our standard is. So we took that persuasive writing to really help them switch gears to that opinion writing so they'll be ready for persuasive writing when that time comes. They have to learn how to really state a strong opinion and give that supporting reasoning and that supportive evidence for that. The other thing that we noticed that was really lacking in the curriculum, and we added it in, was writing in response to reading. That really needed to be embedded throughout the curricular units and reading. How that is a different type of writing than when we're doing genre writing and we're writing in response to a text. And then again, we knew we needed to add in vocabulary and grammar. But an also big takeaway for me was note-taking, note-taking skills. That is very important for the students. We often say they're plagiarizing, they're plagiarizing, and it's very hard to switch that. But when we give them a text and we're telling them to just take key points, they really need to be taught how to do that. So we put very specific note-taking lessons throughout, starting at grade one and building and scaffolding up to grade five, and that's embedded in our content area units within our curriculum. And then, of course, the assessments aligned to that transfer goal. So I want to just take you now to some specific highlights. Those were the overall arching highlights throughout all of the K3 curriculum. But I want to talk to some specifics on the grade levels now. And this was, again, based off of teacher feedback and observations. So one thing we needed to do for kindergarten was we had to, we really basically reconstructed the units on this scope and sequence. We had to really rework these, and the reason is because they needed to be developmentally appropriate for the time of year. So for an example, we originally had small moment writing, which is a form of narrative writing in unit two. And the teachers found that to be a large struggle because you're trying to get the students to write a story. But yet they haven't had emergent writing. So that pattern book unit used to be in unit three, and we had moved that up to unit two because they need to learn how to be emergent writers before they can become writers of narratives. So what we did was we put the pattern books there, but we also added list books into the pattern books. And what that does is a pattern book, right, is the sentence, and it follows a pattern, right? So if the topic was park and it's saying, I can see swings, I can see a slide, I can see people, right? That's the pattern, right? The pattern, that sentence, and they're changing the word. But they needed to get that scaffold in of a list book. And a list book is a topic where they can just draw a picture, and they can label it, and they can put a word. So if, let's say, if the topic was still park, they may draw a picture of a swing and try to write the sounds to swing that they know. So you're just teaching them picture, label, word before you're teaching them picture, label, word sentence. So we kind of backtracked in that scaffold to build that for the kindergartners. And that will help build up their sight word automaticity too for writing. The other change was in the small moment writing. We took that out. Small moment is not a focus for grade one. That's when you're writing a narrative and you're zooming into one particular time. And that's just too high-level thinking for our kinders. So we turned it into personal narrative writing. We want them to first be able to just be able to share a true experience that happened to them and not worry about focusing on that one special moment. Let them just start realizing I'm writing about something true that really happened to me in that personal narrative. And that small moment then begins to come into first grade. And then we also put a very focus, a heavy focus on sentence structure. And that falls within that grammar as well. Just lessons on beginning with that capital, that end punctuation, writing that complete thought, just focusing on a very simple sentence for kindergarten and then building off of that. So that's sentence structure. When we look at first grade, some of our highlights for first grade was we wound up placing a heavy emphasis on decoding fluency and comprehension strategies throughout the reading units. And we scaffolded those strategies where applicable. We had it where it was pretty light, but if you look on here, you'll see the way we broke the head-ins. This one is solving hard strategies to solve hard words, then reading fluency techniques, then reading for understanding, and then writing their response to reading and how we do that, right, with the specific and explicit lessons. So we also put a focus on the sentence structure as well in first grade because that needed to be embedded throughout the writing units. That's within the drafting. We taught strategies of revising and editing and trying to build on what they know in that sentence structure from kindergarten. Then when we look at second grade, second grade, we needed to place a heavy emphasis on paragraphing. The teachers were really, you know, expressing that writing paragraphs is really a challenge for them and understanding how to compose that with a topic sentence and supporting that. So we really put a strong emphasis on paragraph writing and embedded in simple and compound sentences to expand on their writing and for variety. And then again, the grammar skills are taught in second grade throughout the drafting and the revising and the editing stages of that writing process, right? Because we want to teach them that we do this throughout writing, not just when we're revising or just when we're editing. And then our highlights, and you could see here in the editing, you'll see there's a lot of grammar where there, for, this is one example, proper nouns, frequent occurring possessives, contractions, apostrophes. We started really getting a lot of that blended in throughout the units. Our third grade, we did a lot of heavy lifting in third grade. We had to weave and scaffold a lot into third grade because third grade is the big shift, right? It's the transitional grade where students shift from learning to read to reading to learn. And that's a big shift for them. So we weaved and then scaffolded text structure throughout the root units because it is crucial for these students to gain understanding on how a text is structured, how it's organized in order to help deepen the comprehension of that text. And the other big focus that we had in third grade was essay structure. So we first taught them the basics. This is an essay. This is how it's structured, and we take them through that. But then we taught them, we also write an essay in response to reading, right? Because we go into literary essays. But in the past, they automatically went into two texts. We took that back and scaffolded. We're first teaching them in that unit that we, how you write an essay structure in comparison to one text first, right? Just to get that practice, that thinking in, that thesis statement, that claim. And then we shifted into the comparison of the two texts. But we really wanted to teach them essay structure, essay in response to one text, then essay in response to that two texts, to bring that shift for them. So those are really the big highlight to the grade level. I'm really pleased with the feedback, the teacher support. I think the curriculum's moving in the right direction. And I thank you all for your time in this presentation, and I'm ready if there are any questions.
Great. Thank you. Board questions. Mr. Rothstein, anything?
Yeah, thank you so much for that presentation. Yeah, a couple of questions that occurred to me as you were presenting. First off, you had mentioned roughly 20 to 30 days per unit. I'm not sure if that's the right word to use for it, but per educational unit. Do you think that that will be impacted at all by this virtual learning start to the year? Or do you think that's still an appropriate amount of time?
So, very good point. When we wrote the curriculum, we were simultaneously unpacking the curriculum. So I had a second committee that was working with me that consisted of 21 teachers and reading specialists that we went through the units, and we had compacted that very first unit for them and wrote down what were the key indicators, the main points that we need to teach in the standards. So we first went through the standards, looked at that transfer goal, compacted that all down, pulled out those main teaching emphases and points that the teachers really need to focus on and pulled that down. And we did present that out yesterday with the teachers, and they did feel, you know, pretty responsive to it, that, you know, that they felt more prepared for it now. Are we teaching everything in ELA? No, we're really compacted, right? But we're really trying to focus on what are those main key points that they need to learn to move forward. You know, what are the wants and what are the needs?
Got it. Yeah, thank you. And I think something I'm interested in this year, I think, is how this virtual learning period is going to be impacting what's accomplished. It would be great to be able to get that feedback, I think, as well on the other end of how successful were we in implementing the curriculum and in what areas did we not cover stuff that we wanted to? So interesting, interesting stuff. Just a couple of other questions. Are there assessment guidelines for teachers that go along with the curriculum when it's revised?
So what we did, so we have the, stage two has the assessments where we have our baseline assessments, our PBA, our performance-based assessments that are served as our post, and then the informative ones that we would do using conferring notes, anecdotal records, observations. But what we did do to enhance that this year, one of the things was we added a teacher direction page so teachers have the same way to administer them, the same timeframe and those expectations. So we wanted to build that cohesive across the district.
Got it. Thank you. And I guess just a couple of comments. The note-taking, I was happy to see that being addressed so early and honestly, a little bit surprised, but I think that's great. I see that so often, the lack of that skill, and I think starting early is great. And then also just wanted to thank you and the team for the focus and the thought that was put into age-appropriateness for the goals set at each grade level. It seems like you did a lot of, you know, really careful thinking of what we had and what the standards are to what's realistic for the kids. And so thank you.
Thank you.
And that's it for now. Thank you, Mr. Alper.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Trick Scales?
Thank you. That was very well done, very well thought out. So appreciate the presentation and all the hard work. So kudos to the staff who came in and worked during the summer. That's very impressive. So I'm going to follow up on Mr. Rothstein's question because the stage two, you didn't talk too much about that. You did the one and the three. So since we know that that second to third grade is that transitional period, and our third graders really need to be reading by third grade. So what measures are we using at the end of second? Because I would think that that would be really critical to see which students, as far as predicting their success with reading in third grade. What are we actually using at the end of second?
Multiple measures, you know, we use our FMP, our Fontes and Penel Benchmark Assessment times a year to measure that growth. We also use our MAP assessment to determine that. And then we, again, we look at our baseline assessments that we do early on, that pre-assessment in unit one, and then compare that writing at the end of the year, right, where they keep their writing portfolios to show that growth throughout the year. And then each unit aligns to that performance-based post-assessment to make sure they're getting those transfer skills and that they, we compare them and measure them to district rubrics. And we use that as our guideline to see if they're meeting or they're exceeding or if they still need help in those areas.
And this is being done through the new units that were purchased. I don't know if it was last year, I think, the K through three units.
Yes.
So we're delivering our curriculum through reading workshop, writing workshop?
Yeah, so we follow the readers and writers workshop framework, right? Differentiation because it allows us to differentiate, to enrich our students, and help provide intervention where needed through conferences, strategy groups, and guided reading and writing groups. The units of study is a resource that we use along with Jennifer Saravello books, the reading and writing strategy books. And we balance those resources in to align to those teaching points. So those pieces are there to help the teachers deliver their lessons, but they don't drive that framework, right? We doesn't workshop model drives that framework so we can have in all those components a balanced literacy.
Okay. And so our teachers, having had the units for a year, so how are they feeling about it? Do we have some feedback?
So, yes. So I think we are heading in the right direction. We've had a lot of professional development this year unpacking. Do we still have work to do? Yes, we do. You know, we're still moving forward, but we have more concrete understanding of the units of study and really tried to unpack them and break them down where some of them might have been too dense for the teachers. And that's why we went back and realigned some of the anchor charts. And the more important things, like these are the teaching points from, pulled out the parts that are to our standards and took away the parts that are not to our standards, right? Because when the units of study are written, they're written for all audiences, right? They're written for special education, they're written for general education, they're written for all different states. Some, not everybody follows those same standards. So we went in and we made sure we were addressing and pulling the resources from the units of study that would benefit and support our teachers in teaching to our standards.
Right. So that unpacking is really, really important.
Oh, yes. So we are still, we're at different levels now, I should say. And I think PD needs to start to make that shift. Where last year, we did a lot of the 101 of everything where I needed to get a feel of the teachers and build that relationship and that trust so they would want to open up to me too on what's working and what's not and building a lot of that teacher feedback and collaboration. And I think now we need to start to make the shift where if certain people still need some of those beginning things, especially new teachers, grade level changes, right, that we put that in place. And then we have, again, to start to build for the ones who are ready to fly a little further. So I think we have to start to differentiate our PD in workshop, in readers and writers workshop model because being in the classrooms and working at the teachers, we are at very different levels. We're closing the gap, but we are at very different levels.
Appreciate the presentation and all of your responses. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Merkel?
Hi. So thank you for that presentation. I'm glad to hear, like Gary, I was surprised but excited to see about note-taking. I think that's something definitely students can utilize. If you could just speak to what the Curriculum Council is, I know us folks on the Board of Ed know what that is. But just for the folks that are maybe joining on the call and kind of heard you reference the Curriculum Council, if you could just give a little background of what that is and maybe who's involved with that.
Sure. So the Curriculum Council is a variety of stakeholders throughout the district. There's elementary, middle school, high school representatives, teachers, administrators, again, different titles on there. And we come together, we meet, we discuss things around curriculum, curriculum instruction and assessment. And, you know, I was new to it last year. It was my first time on it. I participated in it. So I kind of took that seat back and trying to take it all in and learn, but try to participate. And so they have a strong voice and advocate for the teachers when you're bringing the curriculum to them. And they question, you know, where those concerns may be or where something's going in the right direction.
Thank you.
Also, they also have association representation there. It's also part of the teacher's contract that we have a curriculum. It's also part of the teacher's contract that we have a curriculum council as a part of the approval process. So all of the curriculum does go before the council so that they can make sure that we're incorporating teacher feedback, that we're bringing it through process before it comes to the board.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that. Just in terms of kind of developing this curriculum, could you just talk about maybe a little bit about representation from each of the elementary schools? So I would I would guess that there were teachers and faculty from across all seven elementary schools and maybe what parents can expect to see that maybe they didn't see last year in terms of changes, especially with it, to Gary's point, moving to the virtual platform. What maybe is going to be just high level, what some of the changes they can expect to see for their students from last year?
Sure, so as far as the committee, I did open it up to all faculty. I sent that email out to all faculty and gave to see who would be in. Because my first thing was to get a range of schools. So where I could do that, I did pull it across across the schools, but sometimes I did not have a volunteer from a from a specific school. So there was nothing that I can do to pull them in. But we did try to seek them out. And in addition to the teachers, we also had reading specialists involved because they have a lot of familiarity with all grade levels, with a lot of the teachers concerned around the building because they serve as coaches. So they they have a whole different lens to come in. So the reading specialists helped look at all the curricular units with me together collaborative and the teachers to look at and provide feedback as we were as we were writing them. So we did take a collaborative approach. I rolled up my sleeves and I wrote curriculum alongside those teachers through Zoom. We had the computers up, so it was very collaborative and that feedback was there. I think some of the things that we could expect to see is again, trying to build those vocabulary, those grammar skills, the sentence structure, really just building a lot of those those writing process, going through that writing process and teaching that independency, right? Readers and writers workshop, it's it's to teach students how to become independent readers and writers, right? And build that community. So through those components, we have the architecture, right? Where we give that mini lesson. But then during that time, there's that independent practice and where the students have time to practice that skill and strategy on their own, while then the teacher takes and does one-to-one conferences, small group conferences, strategy groups, whatever the case may be. And again, that's not just to provide intervention for the strugglers, but to be able to push and enrich those one or two kids that might be above that class and they they should be afforded those opportunities as well. So that's who we're hoping to go is to really start to build that love for reading, that love for writing and that independence within there.
Great, thank you.
All right, Ms. Tanniklitz.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. Thank you so much for the presentation and kudos to you and your team for all the work you did over for for this. I'm excited to see the results. And I wanted to back up a little bit and talk about, were you able to assess the fourth and fifth grades that used some of this last year? I know we had sort of a crazy end of the school year, but I was just wondering how that went to start.
So we had a little bit of a blended approach. So what we did was I came in the school year and there was already a K three curriculum that was written and four or five was on on the docket to be revised. The teachers were just given, right? They had the units of study, so the K three teachers were rolling out units of study, learning how to unpack them and working with a new curriculum side by side. So they were doing that trial run for us, unfortunately, right? So that's how we set up. So during that time, we were able to, I would meet with them and pack a unit, try to provide those supports and talk about what's hard about this and what's what's easy about this. Like what do we like? Because I definitely don't want to go in and do a 360 and take away the parts of this that you like. So you have to talk to me also about what you like and then what you don't like as well, because we need that balance, because I don't want to take that away. So at that time, while K three was providing that feedback and I was collecting that feedback after each unit, because I knew it would be too far in advance to remember. So we were we were taking the pulse on feedback throughout the year. So while they were trying that out and they were giving this the feedback on what's working and what's not, grades four and five, I was rolling out with them, here are your units of study. You're on an old curriculum. Let's start unpacking and seeing how this aligns, what we can use, what we could try and work through. So when we're writing our units, we know what's working, what's not working, what you like and not like. So they have not yet gotten to teach it, but I kind of took that almost a blended approach. So it there was a lot of intertwining between it.
Okay, great. And then you also talked about some of the resources and how you were going to better align them to the teaching points. And can you talk a little bit about those resources? And as we're about to approve our equity and diversity bylaw, I wondered if how you're tying in those themes into that?
So, so first off, what we did was with the with the diversity and tying in the themes, our fourth and fifth grade had debatable issues already and we put in the curriculum. So that's easy to intertwine that. I began working with a third committee over the summer. So I did have three committees happening and one of them was it was baby steps that we know we need to look at the diversity within the and inclusivity within the ELA curriculum. But it was summer, it was pandemic, we were writing curriculum and there was a lot. So we took a baby small step and we said, let's just start evaluating and auditing the mentor texts that go to our units. Let's start there because these are the books that we use to teach the reading and writing. So let's just start with the books and make sure they're inclusive and they're diverse. And we began doing that audit, we're still in the process because we have a lot of books, but we have a team. And I want to be able to also open this team once the school year gets underway and everybody settles down a little bit. So more teachers can come on because some people just were not available during the summer. So I want to open it again. And then we are looking within our book rooms to see what other books that we have already purchased that we can put into the curriculum. I do know some teachers at CHIL, like the previous curriculum Making Meaning, had a lot of those good mentor texts and they have them. So we're trying to pull those out and embed them into there and then see where our main holes are and then decide if there's something that maybe then we need to purchase moving forward and how that looks. So we're starting with teacher mentor texts, but then the goal is to move into student classroom libraries because we don't want it to just stop at the text that teaches a teaching way. But we want to put those books within the students' hands as well. And I don't recall what your first part of the question was, I'm sorry.
I think it was just about, you know, some of the other resources. So I think you answered some of that and how they're aligned to the teaching points, yeah.
What we did was, it was very different for teachers. Some teachers took the units of study right away, they loved it, you know, they embraced it. And then some of them felt like, oh, my goodness, this is a thesis. I don't want to read that, just tell me, give me the meat and potatoes of what I have to teach. So that's what we tried to do. So we tried to do that, we tried to really comb through and find where those teaching points were, where those visual pictures of anchor charts were, where it was really quick to get that snapshot picture and align that to the curriculum for that support.
Okay, great. And then I think my last question is really around, you know, this all sounds so wonderful. And I know you still have some work to do on it, but how how, given we're starting in a virtual environment, how are the evaluations gonna, how are you going to evaluate this in this current environment? Which, you know, may be different. I started out thinking about this.
It can be a little tricky because this is the unknown for all of us. But what we are doing is I am, I'm unpacking one unit at a time with them. First of all, everything's overload. So I even told the teachers when I met with them the other day, I'm not going to show you everything that we we're going to unpack and do. We're going to focus on unit one, we're launching, this is where we are. And I broke that down. Then I said to them, now, we did this through a committee. This is what we thought of as a committee trying to put ourselves in your lens. Now, the plan is when we move to the next unit, that would be done in grade level teams looking at the unit. I want to then hear from the teachers, how how is this working? How is this not working? What are your needs? And start to begin to unpack there and really just try to keep that pulse by having open office hours so they can come in, like, help, I need you right now. Or, you know, having those times to to meet at a grade level, of course, the district, because we don't normally get that time. So that's one good plus from from the virtual. We can, we can all zoom, we don't have to worry about traveling from building to building. So we do and plan to tap into that. And some of the other measures are, you know, again, we're just trying to make way through some of them. You know, we usually use the Fontes and Pennell that that measures that. Unfortunately, they're not going virtual. So we're working on right now, I've been speaking to some teachers on some other methods and what we think would be a strong approach for that, to still get that. So we're, we're still working out some of those, some of those things. But the plan is really to meet after each unit.
Great.
And just enhance and see what we can do from there because there is a lot of unknown. We can anticipate things and we do and we're going to continue to, but there's going to be something that goes into it.
Well, thank you so much for all your time on this. I look forward to hearing how it goes towards the end of the year.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. You know, like usual, my questions have been stolen, that's the disadvantage of going last. I do want to thank you, Ms. Hanrady, and everyone who worked on this with you. You know, I think this was a particularly good curricular presentation. I really liked the way you walked us through everything. Like everyone else, I think I'm happy to see grammar in there, really note-taking as well, which, you know, I think, you know, I know my older son, I think, had a unit of Cornell notes, maybe sixth grade or something, but that's sort of like, you know, dropped in from nowhere. It was, you know, there was nothing before it, I'm not sure there was anything after it. So it's good to see that starting to get built in because it's such an important piece. I like the adjustments, I like seeing the changes and the adjustments that you guys were making. You know, I think it's one of the real advantages of the way that we do curriculum here with the with the in-house team that's writing it over the summer and the curricular council, the curricular, the curricular council that's looking at it as well, you know, because it's really putting our stamp on it and making those adjustments and saying, wait, wait, this is this is out of order, we have to resequence that. So good to see, great work, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Cascon, back to you.
Oh, you're muted, Dr. Cascon.
I'm just, I'm getting there, okay?
Okay.
I'd just like to echo the, you know, the sentiments, you know, while I had, I had reviewed the the slide deck prior to tonight's presentation, hearing the presentation and and hearing the process, which of course I've been privy to in my communication with Mrs. Hanrady, Mrs. D'Amendez. It it really makes a lot of sense from a procedural standpoint. And I feel like after a number of years of kind of within this 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 implementation of Readers and Writers Workshop, I I really feel like for the first time, we can, we can feel a sense of confidence that it is actually on track and moving forward in a in a in a very deliberate and strategic manner. I think that the edits that were made to the curriculum were extremely valid. They came from good teacher feedback, which I had also been privy to from some of the meetings. And what I really like about this is is having been in the profession for 25 years and seeing these kind of pendulum swings back and forth as it relates to curricular philosophy, either to one extreme or the other, what you see here in this curriculum is a is a balance. There's an eclectic and balanced nature to this curriculum where, you know, we're not just simply taking this kind of warm and fuzzy kind of workshop piece, although there's there's validity to that, but we're also building in some concrete skills like note-taking, like grammar. And I think we've we've kind of encountered the same enlightenment on the mathematics side because we've done similar things in mathematics and throwing the baby out with the bath water as far as that goes and maybe not teaching directly to computational skills and being too abstract and recognizing that isn't necessarily the best for all students. So I really feel from a curricular philosophy standpoint, we were there. We've kind of arrived finally in the profession. And I think this presentation is a good example of that. So Ms. Hanrady, thank you and and to your team. And obviously, it was a lot with a lot of confidence that I recommended this curriculum to the board for approval tonight. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so just kind of shifting gears a little bit. We today, and I think it's a segue to, Mrs. D'Amendez is going to take the mic in a moment and share some highlights from the the guidebook, the parent guidebook, which we we put out this afternoon. It is a fairly comprehensive document, which is which is geared specifically to try and hit all the key points and information that as parents, guardians, students that you might need from understanding your schedule to understanding what day one is going to look like and how do you know where to go virtually and how to get there and how to log in, all those really important details. Now, you know, number of days in advance of the first day of school. So you can start to kind of process that. I would like to just take a quick digression as it relates to school reopening before I turn it over to Mrs. D'Amendez and just call attention to on the agenda for the board, number seven under the business portion of the agenda, the business office portion of the agenda, there is a resolution pertaining to awarding contracts for emergency purchases. And as it pertains to school reopening, I just wanted to call attention to the fact that these are, this is a resolution to approve emergency purchases, not only for the the vendor from from which we're going to purchase the the bipolar ionization needlepoint devices, if you will, that'll be installed on our ventilation units, but also the vendor from which we're going to purchase the the bipolar ionization mobile units that will go into into some of our spaces. So we were pleased to understand that we would be able to purchase those through emergent purchases and save the time that we would have previously had to use for bidding. So that bodes very well for our timeline and being able to launch that project ASAP and stay on track for original timeline of implementation of the hybrid cohort model. So I just wanted to call attention to that. But at this time, I would turn over the microphone to Mrs. D'Amendez. She's going to share her screen with some key pages from the guidebook as it relates specifically to day one and getting launched. Ms. D'Amendez?
Great, good evening, good evening. Just before I I share the screen, I just wanted to say thank you to our teachers. This was our first week of professional development. We began on the third and wow, we've had a very, very busy, comprehensive and I think successful beginning to preparing and planning for the arrival of our students on Monday. We've begun our mornings with morning check-ins, where the whole staff, close to 1,000 staff members join us in the morning for some SEL, for some conversations from teachers. Dr. Cascon has been tweeting out some of the videos about how our teachers are just, you know, providing suggestions and and commenting on or sharing lessons learned. So I think we're off to a good start. West Orange family, we are prepared for our students to arrive virtually on Monday. And with that said, we've put together a guidebook for our parents and our students. It was sent out today. So I'm going to share my screen so that we can look at just some key things. Here is the table of contents. And as Dr. Cascon alluded, in this manual, parents and students can find responses and outlines and protocols for health and safety for the fall virtual model itself, for the elementary instructional program, the middle school program, the high school, the programs that we have at the district level, how we plan to support our students, special services, what are the student expectations during the fall virtual experience? What is the student workspace? What should that look like as we're preparing our learners to be ready to engage in virtual instruction? What our technology process is for Chromebook distribution and or repairs? Zoom directions for students, we've, we are transitioning from Google meets to Zoom for many, many very comprehensive reasons, to have the ability to break out into small groups, to have direct instruction, to be able to really work with students and differentiate and then contact information for parents so that they're aware of who they may need to reach out to. And so then, just in preparation for Monday, how do we get ready for Monday? What do I need to know? So for preschool and kindergarten students next week, the week of the 14th, we're going to have a meet and greet and orientations for those students where they will receive their Chromebooks, they will receive their logins and passwords. Parents for grades K through three should be receiving in the mail. If they haven't done so already today, they should receive within the next day or two their clever badges. So clever badges are a QR code that the students can just hold over their camera and that will help them log in. This is especially important for our younger learners. Also during the orientation, those will be laminated for parents. So pre-K kindergarten, next week, orientations. And what will the students be doing academically while? And what will the students be doing academically while they are waiting to get their Chromebooks next week? Parents, you should be receiving in the mail also a newsletter with five days of instruction in hard copy and activities for students to be working on until they receive their Chromebooks and they're ready to log in. For grades one through five, we start virtual instruction on Monday at 9:00 AM. Students should be ready to go. Parents, for your fourth and fifth grade students, you should receive an email from the teachers by tomorrow. And that email will let you know what your student's username and login is and what their password is so that they can get into their classrooms. And then for preschool through grade 12, we are all using Google Classroom. Parents, you can simply go to classroom.google.com, click join on the classroom page. You would just enter the classroom name and then there you will find the student's Zoom link. These instructions are all in the manual that we pushed out this evening. The manual can be found on our social media site. It can be found on our district website. It was also sent out to our parents via school messenger. So the instructions are on page 16. If there's a go-to for this weekend, please go to page 16. Have your students join their Google classrooms as soon as possible. No need to wait till Monday. Our portal is open. We've already had hundreds of students join and the earlier the better that way. If there is any question or need for clarity, you can email the teacher, your school principal, and someone will help you so that Monday we are ready to go. So I think that really sums it up. We are, our teachers are excited to have our students back. Even though it's going to be virtual, we will have some in-person experiences. And so we're excited to have, to see our students for those who are of them who are going to be coming into our buildings in person, meeting our younger learners for the first time, our freshman orientation, et cetera. And I think I'll end with the fact that there is an in-person calendar in the manual. So parents, you will find the link. You can click on the in-person calendar and you will see all of the days from now through the end of October, when we will be bringing in our students in person. Why we'll be bringing them in? What are the priorities there, the objectives? Which teachers will be there to service and help our students? And in general idea of how many people will be in our buildings at that time?
Great. All right, board questions. Mr. Rothstein?
Thank you, Ms. D'Amendez. I know, I know it's been a lot of work. We've talked about it over the last several weeks at meetings and really impressed with what the team has put together. It seems comprehensive and I'm keeping my fingers crossed that everything is off to a great start. To that end, really, my main question is, is over the inevitable trouble that some students may encounter with getting connected on that first day and the anxiety around all of that. Is that, apologies, I haven't had a chance to look at the handbook yet that arrived today. Is that addressed in the handbook about what they should do? Or should, should parents or students contact the school if they're having trouble connecting that first? Just speak a little bit to how we should troubleshoot.
Sure. So first, in the parent letter that went home, and it is grade level specific or grade span specific because it's different for the students. But in the letter that goes home, number one, we give instruction around clever badges, right? So once you receive your clever badges, do this. If you can't get in that way, then we give the plan B in the letter and in the instructions. And if you can't get in with your clever badges or you didn't receive them, do this, right? They can just log in. And if you can't log in, then contact technology. Here's the form and we have that linked so that someone can get back to you for accessing the Google Classroom. So I think we have those three kind of movement points, right? So that we can get parents in. I also just want to stress that we all understand this is new. Day one is new and phase in, phase in, phase in, right? Flexibility. So as we start to definitely assess who our students are, we have all of our rosters. We're very clear who should be with us. And students who we don't see virtually day one, by the afternoon, we will be calling home. We will be reaching out to our families and we will be checking in on our students to say, did you receive your clever badge or do you have your login instructions? How can we support? How can we help you? How are we going to get you online, right? So that we can see you in class tomorrow. And so then we'll, we'll reach out and we're prepared to do, to do that, to stay on top of it and to help our families along.
That's great. Thank you again for the careful planning around all of that. And then just a question, I think you had mentioned that for, for students in grades K through three, there's a work packet for the first week until they have their Chromebooks and are up and running with that, if I understood that correctly. Is that right?
For kindergarten.
For kindergarten?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the kindergarten students and pre-K, they don't, we've not met them yet, right? They may not have their Chromebooks yet. So what we did for week one, the week of September 14th, the principals have set up meet and greets and orientations where groups of kindergarten and pre-K students will come in with their plus one, with their parent, and we will distribute Chromebooks. We will go through a very nice activities and social emotional learning and onboarding, right? Getting them logged in, teaching our students and parents what the expectations are and how to easy access. It's a QR code, hold it up to the camera, you're in, right? You're into all of your classes. So really helping our parents through the orientation. And since that takes place next week, the hard copy activities for the first five days are being sent home to parents in a newsletter. So that way it gives them time to just focus on the orientation, getting their children acclimated to their Chromebooks and to their workspace, and then starting on the 21st.
Thank you for clarifying that. That's terrific. Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, Mr. Greskows.
Boy, Mr. D'Amendez, you are so excited.
I am. They're coming, they're coming back.
I mean, your enthusiasm is catching. So just wonderful, wonderful. I know, you know, the opening of school is a, is a beautiful thing, especially after being home for so long. Okay, so is the manual in multiple languages? Have we?
It's halfway there. So today, English went out and we'll have a Spanish out tomorrow, right? We're halfway done with it, but we will have our Spanish manual out, published and ready for parents by tomorrow.
Okay, and Creole?
I'm going to find out about Creole.
Okay. I really like the clever badges and I would like to have one, please. All the tech issues I have, if I could just have a badge and stick it up there, that is the coolest thing. I think we all need clever, clever anything, but clever badges for sure. That automatic login. So who makes that? And where'd you find that? That's so cool.
Yeah, so, you know, Phil Santiago, our director of technology, he really oversees the different platforms, software and integration. And him and his team have done a fantastic job at really just considering, how do we take this one badge, this one QR code, link it to all of our software? So there's over, I think, 40 links, if I'm not mistaken, different programs. So that are, again, our youngest learners don't have to, I can't remember my passwords from yesterday, right? So, and we have so many different things. So here, the little ones can just take this QR code and it'll allow them to log into all of their software, their programs, their Google classrooms, everything.
I just think that's great because that, that really diminishes the anxiety for the little ones and their parents who, who get flustered, you know, when it's, it's time to go on and all of that. I mean, that's what happens to me when we're preparing for a board meeting. You know, I can't find this, I can't find that, I forgot my password. I think that's just, just great. So I'm happy to see that we're going to Zoom.
Yes.
Because I know it does have the breakout rooms. And the other thing with Zoom is that teachers have control.
Yes.
I think that's really, really important, that that host can mute and shut down. Where with the other platform, that was not possible. And with students, yeah, with students not being under your control, I think Zoom was a, was a great idea. The in-person calendar. So did I understand you to say that everyone will have an opportunity to do something in person? No, that's not.
Not everyone, but many. So that's an idea of who's the many. At the elementary level, we'll begin with pre-K and kindergarten next week. And each week subsequent, we will have a new grade rotate through. So there's a plan for grade one, a plan for grade two, moving upward. And then at the middle school and high school level, we have different groups who would be rotating in, our freshmen, you know, different students, different grade levels at different times, our ESL students, our basic skill students, our special education students. They will be coming in. We will be assessing students. I think that's a priority. And I've heard this evening, the board members really asking questions around that as a priority as well, right? One of our focus areas has to be assessing the gaps from when students stopped coming in to school to now, right? What gaps do we see? So we are going to be working toward that end in these in-person experiences to also assess our students with us so we can determine proper placement and really design their curriculum around them. Our school counseling team is also bringing in students in person. So in this in-person calendar, you will see the week. You will see the group that's being brought in. You will see the objectives for that group. You will see the teachers who are expected to come in. And I think this is an important piece here. We wanted to make sure that the staff has advanced notice through the end of October on when they're expected to come in. So that way they can make arrangements for their own childcare. We know all of the reasons, right? But so that they can, again, have advanced notice, know when they're expected to be in our buildings and so that they can make arrangements for their own families.
Great. Well, because you're so excited, I think it would be a wonderful thing to ask parents to take pictures of their kids on the first day of school.
That's a great idea. Dr. Cascon and I, I think we had a blast, Dr. Cascon, right? With the morning sessions, every morning, 30 minutes. We have teachers that are really just teachers talking to teachers, right? And something we hope to do is to keep it up as a culture for us, right? Because we want, our theme is, though physically, not emotionally distant, when we start to move through this a little bit, to have students come on to our morning seconds, right? And really, you know, we've done this, but how do you feel about that, right? How are you coping and understanding the virtual experience? So that'll be kind of.
So wonderful. Yeah, 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 yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So I just want to first thank Ebony, you and your team and Dr. Cascon. As many folks know, I was a little disappointed that we weren't going back onsite for school. But with that, you know, I think the best thing that you can do is, okay, once a decision's made, you move forward and how do you move that, move your best foot forward? And so I'm really excited to see what we're doing and what you have plans. Just in hearing from other boards and other school districts, I think West Orange is way ahead of the game. I think we are so well-prepared. I think our students are going to be, and even our parents, I think, are going to be very excited with what we have planned. And I know, you know, it is, it's, it's a work in motion, right? So we went like everything perfect at first and there might be some technology issues. I saw some posts today about where to go and folks recognizing that we have that tech support line and just questions about the curriculum and what's going to be going on. But I'm just so glad to see that West Orange is leading the charge on just some of these different items with orientation and supply pickup. Just in seeing what other districts are doing, we are so far ahead. And so I want to thank you and all of our faculty and staff for, you know, taking charge and accepting, okay, we're going virtual, how do we make it the best? So thank you for that. Just one of the questions I did have was just in terms of like next week with orientation and some of the curriculum items, especially while our middle school and I think high school students are probably a little bit more self-sufficient. It did seem like some of the items and some of the curriculum pieces, parents were going to have a lot of involvement or maybe need it. And if you could just speak to a little bit too, what kind of resources the parents can expect to have, especially with those that are working full-time and may not have the capacity to sit by their student, you know, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. You know, they may not have that ability. So could you speak a little bit to some of the resources that we have available for parents in those instances, especially at the younger levels?
Yeah, and I do want to acknowledge that, Ms. Merklinger, I think it's very important to acknowledge it. We could be excited about the students coming back. We could design, you know, a masterful plan, but at the end of the day, the students are going to be home, right? And parents are going to be home with their students and that's going to be difficult. We have embedded resources, but we do want to acknowledge that it's still virtual and we are going to have to continue to be collaborators and partners with our parents throughout the process, communicate, 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 and see how we can continue to build supports as we, as we hear what the parent needs are. One of the things that we've put in the guidebook is a very comprehensive area around how to set up your workspace for your child. And we've given, I think, close to, I don't know, 20 or 30 strategies around how to really think about the workspace, how to make sure that a student is at one location. If it's, if it's the place where family usually is, like the dining room table, right? Maybe that's not the best place, right? So how do we set up the workspace and the pencils and the things that they need to have at their fingertips so that if mom or dad, for example, is working from home too, that we don't have that, that disruption? And some of those strategies might be, you have a red post-it, it's urgent, mom, here it is, right? Or that yellow post-it, it can wait, but make sure you come back to me, mom, right? Or, or that green, this is what I'm working on, I'm okay, right? So there are some strategies in there for parents just to help with the communication. There are some strategies about siblings, right? So if there are two children in a home, not seating them too close together, you're going to get feedback on that, on those devices. So there are some things there. I think one of the biggest resources we're going to have in the majority of our classes, K3, is a second teacher in that setting. Not all of our classes, we don't have all of that staff, right? But the majority of our classes will have two teachers per setting. The primary reason is so that when we move over to hybrid, we'll be able to transition because we are going to deal with the live streaming and the in-person experience at the same time. But we're going to start to build those relationships now. And what will that do for parents? We'll have that one person, the teacher who's teaching the content on the Zoom call. But we'll also have the second teacher who's facilitating helping the students engage, right? Who's helping to monitor that, who's helping to see if there's a student in need, making a record of that so that way we can reach out to parents and say, hey, how can I help? How can I support in this process? So I think those are some of the embedded supports that we have. From a curriculum perspective, we're really chunking content, right? So we're chunking it, bite-sized pieces. I can take it, I can work with it. And I think because we're going to be live, Ms. Merklinger, it's going to be very different than just going to a static Google Classroom, reading, 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 and then doing homework, which required a lot of teaching on the parent's part. So I think last year that was an area of weakness for us, right? We, we had a lot of our curriculum just posted asynchronously and we didn't have the opportunity for live. Here, it's very structured. Parents will know exactly when to expect a teacher online, so they have a schedule. It's consistent, it's across the district consistent, right? So it's not one school doing one thing, another school doing another, and then it's live. The teacher is there with the student, engaging with the student. So I'm hopeful that those will be a great start for us in terms of supporting parents.
Yeah, no, that sounds amazing and awesome. So again, I just commend everyone for, for an excellent job. And I think we're going to have a great kickoff to the school year. Just one other question with, with students and the Chromebooks. I just want to, I guess, let the community know and maybe just confirm that every student in the district has, now has access or is in the process of getting or picking up their Chromebook. And we've literally, so that means we have, what, almost 7,000 students in our district? So 7,000 students have one-to-one Chromebooks. And I don't know very many districts that are able to do that and provide that. So I just want to commend not only the school district, but I know the township has also helped us with wifi and things of that nature. So, you know, it takes a village, right? So I just want to thank everyone, you know, for that. And just in terms of, I think we budgeted for it. So, you know, that, again, just something. So, you know, that, again, just something that, uh, we as a board, um, fully support, you know, everyone having equal access to technology and, um, thanking you guys for organizing that. And I think it's gone smoothly from what I've seen so far. And, um, just for folks that may have questions or, um, concerns, um, I think, is there a mailbox or is there some type of district, um, place, a one place that parents can reach out to or do you recommend they? I mean, probably I'm going to guess that they should communicate with their teachers first. Um, but is there, you know, if, if a group of parents, maybe I know there's a lot of these home, um, pods that are coming up or, uh, families that are working together, um, community, you know, in their neighborhoods to work together. Um, is there something where they can report maybe an issue that a few of the students are having? Um, or would you recommend they just go right to their teacher?
Yes, we would recommend that they go to their teacher. Um, you know, again, we have the structured schedules, uh, those assignments will be posted. Um, and so then whatever support we can offer, uh, to our parents or to these structures of support that they have um, obtained at home, we'll be, we'll be there to do that. But parents should definitely reach out to the teachers.
Great. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Alper. Mrs. Mendez, I think, I think another point which may be relevant to that idea of, you know, the kind of the, the, the working parent at home is the idea of the synchronous versus the asynchronous. In other words, that, that afternoon period, it being asynchronous allows for a greater degree of flexibility in the home for the child to re-engage on the computer at a time that's convenient for both the child and the parent.
Yes, I, I agree. And, um, you know, I, I don't recall who said it a little earlier, but, um, a lot of school districts, their day one, um, already, you know, already happened while our teachers were in PD. So one, thank you to the board for supporting that, for supporting our initiative to really allow our teachers to, um, transition back to school, to get prepared, to really feel that they own all of the new learning and this new environment. Um, I lost my train of thought. Oh, my God. So what was it, Dr. Cascone?
Synchronous versus asynchronous.
Synchronous versus asynchronous. So, um, I, day one, we've heard, I mean, I can't tell you how many texts we received from colleagues in other districts that planned for a full day of instruction, right? From the beginning to the end of the day and how taxing that is on, um, both the parent and the student to be expected to sit there all day long, um, for synchronous instruction. So, um, because we are stopping midday with our synchronous portion, then the PM offers great flexibility to the student and to the parent, uh, for that asynchronous portion and the ability to go not only, um, to experience the asynchronous classes, but the synchronous classes, the live classes that are being held via Zoom, the direct instruction portion will be recorded. So I think that's an important feature for parents who are working and who want to be able to support and work with their students at their, on their schedule, right? And so then what's going to happen is these live classes will take place. The, the meat and potatoes, right? The talking points, the teaching points, the crucial element of the instruction will be recorded and it will be uploaded into Google Classroom at the end of each day. And so that will, what that will offer for our parents and students is an opportunity for parents then to go back if they were not available, right? With their child and just review any content if they wanted to offer the additional support. And also the, the learning pods, right? They would have access to those and, um, anyone who's supporting our students would be able to do that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Mendez.
Excellent. Ms. Tennycliff.
Thank you. Um, this is overwhelming to me how much work went into all of this planning. And I congratulate you and all of our teachers who have been doing PD this week and getting ready for this undertaking. Um, I know it's not easy and we certainly appreciate everything you're doing to, um, support our students and our families. So thank you to all of you for this. Um, I don't think I have a whole lot of questions. Um, I think a lot of them have already been answered, but just, uh, I echo your excitement over the start of the school year. I love the start of the school year that, um, and I think, uh, I'm proud of our district and, and what we're doing. So, um, good luck to everyone and, uh, thank you for, uh, speaking today and giving us a little more insight into what's going to happen in the next couple of weeks.
Uh, thank you. Um, yeah, uh, so much praise for everything you've been doing all summer and everything your team's been doing. Um, you know, I think that in, in a week, uh, in a couple of weeks, when we have our next meeting on the 21st, I think it is, uh, we're going to be really impressed with how this, you know, I don't want to jinx anything, but you know, I think we are, from everything I'm hearing from other districts, from our own teachers who are telling us what they're hearing from friends in other districts and everything else. Uh, you know, I think the West Orange difference is going to be amazing. Um, you know, I think Cheryl makes a really good point about the Chromebooks. You know, it's, it's a huge equity piece for our district and, you know, there's a lot of credit to go around there. And, you know, you know, uh, we shouldn't sleep on Phil Santiago, who, you know, every year advocates to make sure that the right number of Chromebooks that need to be replaced are in the budget to be replaced, uh, so that we're always keeping up our stock. Um, you know, and my fellow current board members for everything they've done to make sure that those requests, uh, get fulfilled each year. It's really important. Nick Allegrino at, uh, Township OEM, who did so much to get us started with the MiFi and get those devices to our families that don't have internet access at home too. So a lot of moving pieces there and a lot of hard work by a lot of people to make this happen. Um, and thank you for that.
Yeah, you tweeted something out, Mr. Alper. You said, uh, we, West Orange was a hundred percent ahead of the curve. And someone responded to you, well, that's interesting because seventeen percent of Americans say, you know, that the beginning of the school year is not going to be a good one, right? Or, or only seventeen percent. So we pulled that tweet and we called our staff day one and we came back into eighty percent, right? Eighty percent of our staff feel that our year is off to a good start. So, um, we're excited for them, uh, we're excited for our students. And I just want to thank our instructional technology team. I mean, we have a fantastic instructional technology team who's really rolled out all of this PD. Uh, they've been working around the clock. So thank you, you know, commendations to that team, um, and, and to our staff.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, Dr. See any wrap-up on this?
Yeah, not a lot. I mean, I think, um, you know, it's, uh, the work, um, speaks for itself. Uh, I'm tremendously thankful, uh, to Mrs. Mendez, to, um, to the team of folks who have been working to, to get this done, really a, a relatively short amount of time um, to plan, uh, essentially five district-wide staff development days all in a virtual format. And we typically will spend months planning one brick and mortar day. And this team has put together five days of exclusively virtual training to high marks, largely high marks from our staff in terms of the quality and the efficacy of these trainings. So it's, it really is a miraculous, um, achievement and one which is going to reap, uh, you know, benefits for our, our students, which is ultimately, you know, why we're all here. So thank you, Mrs. Mendez. Um, and again, echo my thanks to, uh, to all the staff as well. And that is, uh, that concludes my report, Mr. Alper.
Great. Thank you. All right, uh, next, questions from the public on agenda items only. Uh, you'll have three minutes. Uh, just let us know your name and address when you come in. And, uh, remember there'll be another comment period later on for anything that isn't on the agenda.
Thank you very much. And we have, uh, yes, if you'd like to speak, you use the raise your hand function that's located at the bottom of your screen. And for anyone who is calling in, it is star nine and you just have to push it once and it'll put you right in the queue. Okay, up first, we have Jennifer Paul. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good evening, board, Dr. Cascone and Ms. Mendez. I just wanted to thank Ms. Hanrady for her presentation tonight.
Jennifer, I'm sorry, can you just, uh, state your name and, and your address or your position?
Hi, my name is Jennifer Paul. I'm a twenty-year veteran teacher in the district. I work at Redwood and I teach the second grade. Um, I just wanted to thank Mrs. Hanrady for her presentation tonight and more so for her hard work and expertise in revising our ELA curriculum. Um, on behalf of like a majority of the elementary ELA teachers, I have expressed to upper administration concern about our ELA program for years. And we've used various programs, we've had annual revisions to the curriculum, which have made teachers feel very uncomfortable. And I believe we are finally at a point where there is a direction and that is the right direction for us to move forward. This year, for the first time, the teachers' voices have been heard and taken into consideration when revising the curriculum. This is very much appreciated and has allowed the teachers to feel some sort of a buy-in. For the first time in a long time, I personally am really excited about teaching our ELA and feel that we will not be reinventing the wheel again, thanks to Mrs. Hanrady's work. Um, she has already set us on the right path for this year and for the future of using this new curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next, uh, Kristen Russell, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hello.
Hi, thank you. Just your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Kristen Russell, fifty-three Lawrence Avenue. Um, I just, my question is about the, the second teacher at the elementary level. How is that working and who is that second teacher? I mean, it sounds like a great thing, but I'm just confused how that's happening. Um, like, are they combining two classes so that two teachers are, are like from a grade level or there? Or just wondering how that's happening. But, um, honestly, all considering everything looks really good, I'm glad we're going to Zoom. I do personally like that better. And as much as I'd like to be in person, I'm glad to see where we are, um, virtually. So thank you. But that was just my, my main question. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Erin Kesselman, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Yes, hi, thank you. Erin Kesselman, one Galloway Court. I have a few questions. One, I've, I, I noticed that it looks like we're moving from the board of education meetings to a more in-person meeting, maybe not virtual, it looks like. So I see this meeting is virtual. The September twenty-first meeting is virtual and the October fifth meeting looks to be not virtual. I would hope that we, you know, that we keep those, uh, at least some sort of virtual component for those families that maybe can't either make it or that they may be concerned due to the current situation that we are in. Um, and I, again, I hope that is being worked on. Uh, secondly, the, uh, are we still using Google Meet and Zoom together? Or are we just scrapping Google Meet and doing Zoom? Uh, thirdly, um, I noticed that the schedule is the ninety-twelve block, the most important block for K through five. Um, and thirdly, I see on the page twenty-two of the, of the parent school book that the gifted and talented program only mentions, uh, as low as, uh, grade three. What about the, uh, gifted and talented, uh, classes for younger than that? So let's say grade two through, through kindergarten. So those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Melinda Huerta, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hello.
Hi, thank you.
Hi, yes, Melinda Huerta here. I'm seventeen Park Drive South. I had a comment about the curriculum, curriculum council. Um, I'm really glad that we are taking, uh, the teachers', uh, voices and considerations into account and really, um, really hearing their voices and, and having their input in, into the curriculum, uh, which, you know, they are implementing. Um, I did have a question about the ELA, but I guess it would apply to not just ELA, but overall. Or how are we taking into account the child's or the children's typewriting skills versus their handwriting skills? Or even, I know, um, the option was for talk to text. Um, some kids don't really like the typewriter or, you know, typing on the keyboards. Um, and how are we meeting or helping develop those typewriting skills, uh, to help them be able to be more efficient in their, their schoolwork? Um, another question I had is, uh, when will attendance be taken? Or how will it be affected if they aren't able to log on at specific times? Um, I, I haven't had a chance to read over the handbook, so I'm not sure if that was addressed in that. And where could we find out some more information on the MiFi? I, I heard something being mentioned, uh, about MiFi being available throughout the town. Um, is that available on the website or is it also in the handbook? And I believe that is all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and next, uh, Mark Robertson, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, hello, everyone. Uh, Mark Robertson, eleven Chester Terrace. First of all, I applaud the move to Zoom. I, uh, appreciate the hard work of our teachers and administrators and the enthusiasm that I've heard. The energy is contagious. Um, I do have some concerns. One, I feel that this is the worst communication regarding a major change in the fourteen years I've had kids in our schools. Uh, there should have been parent orientations at each school before school starts to be sent a thorough but lengthy forty-four-page manual three days before school without any orientation for the parents is a huge burden on top of the anxiety that parents already feel. Uh, and some of the student orientations aren't even occurring until after school starts. And while I do applaud the later start, uh, and to, to provide more time to prep, uh, I do believe that more time should have been spent on communication and partnership, uh, with the parents. Uh, second, um, you know, I actually work with a number of school districts and I've always been a leading advocate on having Chromebooks for all of our kids or one-to-one Chromebooks. And I, I think the board and, and, and the administrators and, and, uh, uh, it did a great job in making that happen. We are not alone there. Actually, a lot of districts have, uh, followed suit. Where I am concerned that we've actually fallen behind is in regard to special education. Um, I know a number of parents have come to me and I'm aware of parents who asked to go to other districts because other, many other districts are providing at least two days, uh, in person to meet the needs, uh, of their special ed kids. And we're not providing any and for some of the more severe needs. And almost twenty percent of our kids are, 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 are special education, right? Almost twenty percent, one-fifth, right? Um, so that's, that's huge and we're, we're falling way behind in that. Last, Reader's Writers Workshop. I, I, it's, I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful that it's actually being done right this time. It's been in the district about seven years and been through many iterations. There was no mention, though, of the book clubs, this, unless I missed it, I mean, I missed it. But the small group book clubs, which account for about sixty to seventy-five percent of the actual reading that occurs in the Reader's Writers Workshop, and they're grouped on the basis of reading level. Uh, I assume that's being handled by the breakout rooms that you can, that you can, uh, do in Zoom. But I'd like somebody to address how that's actually being, uh, executed. You know, thanks again, I appreciate all your hard work. I do hope for better communication and for addressing, uh, the special needs of our special needs kids and of all of our kids. I wish you well and I'm always there with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this is one of our call-in, uh, callers. The last four numbers, one, five, eight, four. If you can just let us your, uh, unmute your phone and let us know your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, Denise Guamal, nine Martha Street. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead. So, so, uh, thank you for, for everything, um, that, that you guys have come up with. Um, my question is specifically regarding, uh, the Zoom sessions. Uh, is there an option to have a virtual background? My concern is, um, with regard to privacy. That's really the only thing that I, that I had, uh, to ask. I wasn't sure if we were going to be able to have the option to, to have a virtual background. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, please, uh, Tez Roro, if you can follow the prompt on your screen.
Good evening. Um, I'm, I'm happy to hear all of the progress, uh, that has been made and I'm excited for the upcoming school year. Um, in regards to the curriculum changes that have been made, I'm curious. Um, do public schools offer cursive writing anymore, uh, across any district? And if so, has that been part of the discussion? I remember having that discussion with my son when, you know, he couldn't read some of my handwriting. And I know within the parental community, there's some talks. I'm curious to see where that is within the public school space. Um, and I want to say I really appreciate, um, the teachers' enthusiasm through it all. We've all been dealing with, um, you know, uncertain times. And I'm really happy to report that, um, my son's teacher has sent several communications so far. And I, I feel really, I'm happy that, you know, she's communicating with us. And if there are any teachers listening, I would, um, encourage you to send some kind of a Google form, which my son's teacher did. And what I really appreciate about it is there are a lot of questions, but one of it says, you know, what is your child's name? And do they have a nickname that they go by? And to me, that's a big. a nickname that they go by? And to me, that's a big deal, particularly for those of us who may have kids with, you know, other pronunciations may not be very straightforward. I, you know, I appreciated that. And just, you know, different questions. Are there any allergies or whatever? So this lets me know that the teacher is taking extra steps to get to know my son and my family. And I really appreciate that. This is Mrs. McGuire. Shout out to her and Gregory. The other is the handbook that has been sent. I really appreciate the work that went into it. And I have not gotten a chance to read, but just from what Mr. Mendez mentioned, I really love, you know, the red, orange, green idea, for example. So the idea that, you know, you guys put the energy together to create this is really appreciated. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Boylan, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, good evening. Dan Boylan, 234 Gregory Avenue. Let me just start off by thanking everyone for your, your hard work, your time and dedication to, to our students. It's much appreciated. I am speaking tonight just to express some level of frustration, and it's regarding the start of the kindergarten school year. My wife and I have three children in West Orange schools, two of whom are kindergartners. We were planning our lives with the understanding that kindergarten was starting on September 14th, and learned only today that it will not start until September 21st. I'm not alone in that surprise. I've spoken to several kindergarten parents today. And this is not out of some fidelity for September 14th. You know, the context is that my wife and I, like many West Orange families, both work. And we planned our lives with the assumption that the kids would be in school and in a directed learning program that we've enrolled them in. They may not be able to attend that if they're not actually going to school and receiving curriculum. That obviously has collateral consequences for our work, because we've arranged our work week next week with the assumptions that the, that the twins will be in this directed learning program. So, you know, I know that everyone's been working hard, and I appreciate that. But I did just want to bring that to the board's attention. If this was communicated in some way, for our, from our perspective, it would be insufficient. And I think from other parents' perspectives, that communication would have been insufficient to allow us to plan for our own schedules next week with, with our kindergartners being home. My understanding is that the things being planned in terms of orientation and onboarding are only going to take about two and a half hours out of the week, which is different than a full day of synchronous instruction, which we've been prepping for. So I thank you for your time. I thank you for your attention. And I do wish everyone a great school year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next person I have is just the first name Sarah with an H. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please. Sarah? You can raise your hand if you can follow the prompt on your screen. Okay, I'm going to come back to, okay, Sarah lowered her hand. No problem. And next, we have listed as the Mwangi family. If you can follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes, thank you. Just your name and address for the record, please.
My name is April Mwangi. I'm at 66 Fitz Randolph. I just had a couple of questions in regards to safety of our students and essentially our teachers, administrators, and staff. I wanted to know about if everyone will be getting tested before going back into school once the whole reevaluation is conducted. Will these, if testing is actually done, will that be done monthly? Will attempts be taken in the morning daily by everyone? If one person does test positive, will you be shutting the whole school down, going remote? Or is there a plan actually set up for that? And will parents be updated throughout the entire process of how the students and the teachers and staff are doing in the building with the children and how the adjustment is? But other than that, I definitely want to thank everybody from the Board of Ed for taking the time to come up with this plan quickly and efficiently. So I do thank you, all of you, for setting all of this up and doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have another caller and the last, no, they took down their hand. Okay, Stuart Neckbar, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Stuart Neckbar, 11 Morris Road, West Orange. I have been reviewing the Road to Handbook, and the link for the in-person experiences calendar doesn't work. That's on page 34 of the handbook. It doesn't work. It says that you have to request special access, and that access has to be granted. Being that we don't know what this is, could someone please explain how this is working, especially in light of the special needs students? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Carol Anne Holland, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, this is Carol Anne Holland, 71 Lawrence Avenue. Excuse me. My only question was that our teachers still expected to come in the building. I know there was concern about that a few meetings ago, and I wasn't sure if that had changed. And, sorry, Sarah got kicked off Zoom just as you called on her and hasn't been able to get back in. So I don't know how to help that. But anyway, that was my only question is, are teachers expected to teach from the building? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we just have the first name Anita. If you can follow, oh, okay, you're using an older version of Zoom. Okay, so Anita, don't touch your screen. Okay, and. Okay, there we go. And then Anita, now if you can just unmute, I stopped your video for you. If you can just unmute for me.
Great. Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, thank you. Hi, this is Anita Davis, 9 Mountain Way. I want to thank you guys for a wonderful job. You did an outstanding job and welcome aboard, Ms. Hanrady. And, and Ms. Demendez, you, your enthusiasm is, is quite contagious. So wonderful job on that as well. I'm excited. So my question is really around the ELA program, which Ms. Hanrady had went over in detail, which I thought was very thorough. I have questions around some of the specialized programs, including programs such as Art and, Art and Gillahan, Art and Gillahan Program. I'm not sure if that is part of the curriculum, or if that's going to be part of for kids that may be struggling with reading and need extra help. What is the plan around that with this new enhanced ELA program? So I wanted to get additional, some questions answered around that, number one. And number two, regarding the Zoom, one of the other parents asked a question regarding privacy. If we can have a background screen on the Zoom, I know we can. I don't know if it's involved here. So that question also is very important to me. But otherwise, great, great. I think you've done a wonderful job. I know there's been some complaints about communication, and it's quite a bit undertaken that you're doing. So I just want to give you kudos and every, you know, everything is not going to be launched perfectly. But I think you've done a wonderful job. And, you know, we will, you will continue to improve along the ways. So, so you have my vote of confidence. So keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Anita, your screen is going to change again. Just bear with it. It'll take one moment. I'll turn you back to an attendee. Okay, and the name on the screen I have is Tellica. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank all the teachers and administrators for the wonderful work that you've done. Kudos to you. We're actually new to West Orange.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but if we can just have your name and address for the record?
Sure. Tellica O'Gale, 2 Green Tree Road.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're new to the community. Our son is entering fifth grade, and I wanted to know, what should I know to ensure that he is successful? It seems like almost everyone on the call has a lot of information, and would be helpful if we could sync up with some people. He's going into fifth grade to be sure that he's successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And it looks like we have Sarah back. Sarah, if you can, please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, this is Sarah, 47 Oak Ridge Road. Sorry, I got kicked off of Zoom last time, right after you called on me.
It's okay. No problem. We got you back.
My apologies. Um, I, I, I don't know if maybe I got on a little bit late, so I don't know if this question was already answered. But I saw in the parent guide on page 19 that there is a schedule posted for the mornings for grades fourth and, four and five. And I wanted to know, is that just a sample schedule? Or is that final? And I was, I was kind of wondering then, how would all fourth graders do math at once? Because, you know, they're departmentalized, and, you know, how, how would that work? Is this going to just vary based on their homeroom teacher? So it's not a final schedule? It's just one possible schedule? And if, if it is just a possible schedule, when do we find out, find out like the final schedule for our fourth and fifth graders? And when, when that's available, how will, will the kids be able to know that schedule pretty easily, just logging onto Google Classroom? Because I'm just concerned that they'll have to like switch around to different Google Classrooms throughout the day so that they could do math and then social studies, et cetera. And if I'm not available, I'm just worried she won't be able to find the Zoom link. And that was really it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. And so we have a final call for anyone who would like to speak for questions from the public on agenda items. Okay, thank you. Sandra Mordecai, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, Sandra Mordecai, 516 Pleasant Valley Way. First of all, thank you for all the hard work that you're doing. It's, it's obvious that you're, you've been very thorough and, and it's, you've been putting in a lot of work. I have a question. On page eight of the Agenda Attachment 14, can you please explain the refunding of the bonds, the $19 million resolution? Next, and for the union sidebar, I'm aware that all the union contracts have now expired. But the union sidebar, taking Mr. Seegy out of the Administrators Union, I thought he was already out of that union. And if you're removing directors out of that union, then should you be removing the Director of Guidance, Directors of Special Ed, and other directors throughout the district out of that union as well? And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, once again, do we have anyone else for public agenda items? We can use the Raise Your Hand feature. And we have quite a few people on our call list today. You can just hit star nine. Okay, that seems to be it.
All right. Dr. Kaskel.
Mr. Alper, are you comfortable with us kind of doing a comprehensive run through the questions? Okay, very good. Okay, thank you to our, our community members. I just want to, you know, just express as superintendent, my appreciation just for the, just the balanced and measured feedback, you know. And, you know, it's important to get critical feedback to help us continue to improve. You know, obviously, you know, having been in the district for about a year now, I think the community is acquainted with my communication style. And so might be observing maybe perhaps a little bit of a disconnect between my, my typical modus operandi and that which maybe you've seen in some cases this summer. And, and you're right, you know, it's, it's for somebody who prides himself on timely communication. It has been a challenging and in some ways frustrating summer because of the, the timeline with it, within which we've been operating, and the fact that we've been doing it on a vertical learning curve, which is, you know, is kind of, we're, we're learning in real time, and we're making adjustments in real time. And wanted to be sure that when we ultimately do communicate out to parents, we're doing it kind of thorough, in a thorough manner. But certainly, to Mr. Robertson's point, duly noted, right? I mean, and, and believe me, I was biting my nails all week, like waiting on this guidebook to get kind of finalized. But we wanted to make sure that when we got it out, that it was, that it was well done, and it was complete, and it was accurate. But duly noted. And certainly as the year starts, imagine that the timeline and the learning curve will not nearly be, be nearly as steep as they, as they had been. Speaking to the point about the, the co-teacher, and, and, you know, by the way, I'm going to have Mrs. Demendez in the wings here in the event. Mrs. Demendez, feel free to chime in if you feel that I haven't done the, done a complete service to, to the answer. But the, the co-teacher is, can be a teacher coming from a variety of different backgrounds. And really, what the, the role of that teacher is going to be is to be basically another professional support within the classroom to, you know, and again, I want to hearken back to what Mrs. Demendez said about, this is really laying the groundwork for when we get into the building, and we're doing that, that live streaming. And so you have a teacher that's in front of the classroom that's teaching live. But then you also have a cohort of students who are on that platform virtually. And so it'll really have a great utility within that modality, because you'll have a second teacher that's able to kind of manage the students on the virtual platform contemporaneously with the teacher that's up in front of the classroom teaching. But even before we do that, and a precursor to that, A, as Mrs. Demendez said, it helps to build that cooperative relationship between the co-teachers, the main teacher and the co-teacher. And it also still puts another, another teacher in the, in the virtual space to assist students on a whole number of different matters, initially just kind of getting logged on and getting acquainted, but ultimately being able to actually conduct separate breakout rooms, splitting the class in half, being able to do some smaller learning communities within those breakout rooms. So that's a little bit of, of how that teacher would be utilized in collaboration with the classroom teacher. I'm going to have Mr. Alper put a pin in the question about the board meetings. I, I will defer to Mrs. Demendez on the, on the HAP question. My understanding of the K2 gifted and talented curriculum is that it's, it's infused within the, the curriculum of the mainstream classroom. K2 program's not a pull-out program. But Mrs. Demendez, did you want to expand upon that answer at all?
Sure. K2 is more enrichment, and we usually do observance at the very beginning for our younger learners, our K1, before we move into gifted. So we will be observing students at the beginning as we move through. The teachers, the gifted and talented teachers will be pushing into enrichment. The ones that we have indicated on the calendar are the ones where students will be receiving synchronous instruction. That calendar is about synchronous instruction, not a push-in calendar. But we will modify it just so that it's clear for parents how we're providing the enrichment for gifted. And then just with regard to the second teacher, this is a, a non-ELA or math or non-homeroom teacher. It might be a related arts teacher, a basic skills teacher that's supporting. And so then, to Ms. Russell's question, we're not combining two classes. The class sizes will remain small. They will just be the class of that homeroom teacher. And so then we will, we will not be combining classes.
Thank you, Mr. Mendez. The, the question about the, the handwriting to typing, I think it's a really interesting question. And, you know, I don't know if we have any insights into that question, but I definitely feel like it's a question for further thought within our planning teams. Anything either Mrs. Hanrady or Mrs. Demendez wanted to weigh in on that?
Actually, our teachers did have some PD around some strategies for that, to include these colorful keyboard. I don't know, on my keyboard, I have like a little cover that I can put over my keyboard, and it has colors. And so then we are working with students with strategies around the keyboard to help them develop those skills and readily be able to engage that way, especially so that we're assessing what they know about content and not typing skills. So there are strategies that we are teaching into regarding keyboarding and typing, and that was, that was done this week, and we'll continue to do so.
And in my conversation with the kindergarten teachers, we talked about using the keyboard to benefit letter and sound recognition. So when they're teaching the letter and they want to hold it up, have them try to find and identify the letter on the keyboard to stop building that. So when they're teaching the letter and they want to hold it up, have them try to find and identify the letter on the keyboard to stop building that awareness as well.
Thank you, folks. Relative to attendance, there is information within the guidebook relative to attendance. I will, just from kind of a broad brush stroke perspective, you know, that, that in those, those opening days, we definitely intend to employ a certain degree of flexibility and understanding that in as much as we've tried to, you know, cast a wide net as far as communication, you know, some folks may have not gotten the memo, so to speak. And certainly following up with those families and understanding why that disconnect exists. And being understanding certainly in the earlier days of the year, relative to that. Listen, special education, in-person special education, we have heard the call, we get it. And, and that's why our charge that we've, that we're heating now is to get, you know, our self-contained special education populations in as soon as possible for some in-person learning experiences. And I believe, you know, we're shooting for early October, second week of October, at which time we're, we're looking to begin to do that. So as soon as we're able to do that, that is, that is a top priority for us now. We have heard our special needs parents and are working aggressively on that. You know, that does not eliminate the fact that we do have some ventilation issues, which we are, we are in the process of remediating. And so we need to think about identifying spaces within our buildings, which we can feel comfortable bringing both students and staff in to operate in, which would be temporary locations in some cases until we have all of our issues remediated. Mrs. Hanretti, would you like to speak to book clubs and Orton Gillingham?
Sure. So book clubs and guided reading are all part of our balanced literacy program. So they weren't spoken to because just as we teach them all the time, that is going to be a continued practice. In the beginning of the year, we always do our launching units where we begin to just set our routines for reading, for writing, the classroom expectations. So we don't necessarily usually start them within their first unit. We usually do our benchmark assessment in early October, which usually will help guide for the levels for those book clubs and guided reading. But they will be continuing as they normally do within those breakout sessions. And the kids can have those conversations around those books. As far as the Orton Gillingham, we use the foundations program, which is also a multi-sensory systematic phonics approach to spelling and handwriting as well. It does address handwriting in kindergarten. And that goes to all our K two students, they get that thirty minutes a day generally. And they'll continue to get it during the hybrid model and in the virtual model. And Orton Gillingham, we do have that program that is usually given to our specialized students who need additional support. So if the foundations program is not enough for our gen ed kids, and then we give them tier two and tier three extra intervention given by BSI teachers, reading specialists, if they feel that they need to then switch that program over. But that's generally for the special education students.
And Mrs. Hanretti, any, any insights on cursive writing?
It has been taken out of the standards. I have, I have heard that there, it may be coming back in the close future. But we don't teach cursive writing anymore, unfortunately.
I'd love to see.
Foundation program does have cursive formation, that if parents did want some extra practice to send home, we do have it. We just don't, it's not in our standard, so we no longer teach it.
Would love to see it at least for a student to at least be able to write their name, right, in signature. I mean, that, if nothing else, that's something to, to consider moving forward. Thank you, Mrs. Hanretti.
Thank you.
Just to kind of speak to Mr. Boylan's point, and yes, sir, duly noted and fair. And I think that, you know, this was an example of, as we were kind of working through this and getting down into the weeds of negotiating the logistics of getting students in and orienting them and recognizing that because we couldn't necessarily guarantee that they would have access to their Chromebook and know how to use it and log in. And so, but, but absolutely, you know, understood. Now, I will say that, you know, the, that the students will be provided with, you know, with, with work for that week. Of course, it doesn't address the issue of the fact that they would, they will otherwise be engaged for the first four hours of the day with, with the classroom teacher, thus freeing parents to be, have a little bit more latitude to handle their own personal and or professional responsibilities. Your feedback is, is absolutely valid and duly noted. And we will, we will always strive to get information, relevant information to parents in as timely a fashion as possible. So we do, we do apologize for that kind of late pivot there, for that, any inconvenience that's caused you or other families. Relative to kind of some of the safety questions, I can tell you that we are following the CDC guidelines, which do not mandate testing. And, and the reason for that is, is really the frequency with which we would need to be testing such a large number of, of, of folks on a regular basis would be both logistically impractical and cost prohibitive to do. And it is not even necessarily recommended under the CDC guidelines. I can tell you, however, that any, any individual that enters our building on a daily basis, whether a staff member or a student, will be thermally screened before they come in, we will have universal masking, we will have social distance. So all of those, those, those preventative measures will ensure a level of, of, of safety for, for anyone who happens to be in our, in our building. As far as contact tracing goes, we do have our contact tracing protocol outlined in detail within our school reopening plan. We have, obviously, when you talk about contact tracing, we work very closely with the local Department of Health, very closely with our district physician to understand what kind of the circle of communication needs to be to people. We will always err on the side of using discretion in our communications as to protect the confidentiality rights of those who may be, who may have been ill. But essentially, in a nutshell, if through the contact tracing interviews, you are, you are identified as a person who is at risk, then you will receive a direct notification of that. Above and beyond that, the notifications will tend to be more general, again, in deference to the HIPAA rights of the infected individual. Relative to, I believe, the, the link for the in-person experiencing calendar has been fixed. So that is now viewable to the public, we apologize for that. But that is now viewable to the public. Relative to teachers and expectations for teachers to be in the buildings presently, the, the expectation to be in on a daily basis is voluntary. Though we will have a large number of teachers who will be coming to our buildings on a daily basis. Our teachers will be required to come to buildings when, when they have an essential job function to perform that cannot be performed virtually, right? And so when you talk about orientations, you talk about testing, you know, you talk about working with small groups of students. In those occasions, teachers will be required to come in. But what we will do is, you know, certainly, you know, even within a socially distanced setting, an outside setting, we will make, take every step to ensure that the work environment in which they're being asked to return isn't fully aligned, is fully aligned with the health and safety guidelines. And even with that, if they still felt that they were at risk, then of course, they could go through the process of presenting doctor's orders, which then would be vetted through our human resources department and our district physician. But to date, that, that approach seems to be working really well. And it's given us additional time to work through when we ultimately do get into a situation where we're bringing students into our schools, additional time to kind of work through, understanding what those situations are and how we might have to find, leave replacement teachers in the event that happened. You know, as far as, I'm going to, I'm going to let Mrs. Dendez handle that question about the sample schedule. Do you want to take that one, Mrs. Dendez?
Sure, so the question was around grades four, five and the sample schedule on page nineteen. So Sarah, yes, we have departmentalized classes. And therefore, there is a teacher for, let's say, ELA and social studies and a different teacher for math and science. In an effort to make sure that none of the classes have sixty students and that the teachers can meet departmentalized by homeroom, we've published a sample grade four, five schedule. This is what one schedule would look like for a student that has that type of departmentalization, right? Maybe a three teacher model or a two teacher model. So to your question with regard to how will students know what their schedule is, when they log in and join their Google Classroom, teachers have posted how students can access their specific schedule with their times. So a student will join their Google Classroom and they will be able to see and readily identify, these are my times, these are the teachers that I will be meeting with. With regard to the question about how many Google Classrooms will I have? If I, as a student, log into my Google Classroom portal, I will see my deck, right? So I will see my ELA social studies Google Classroom, I will see my math or my science, so, science classroom, I will see my related arts classroom. So that deck will be there for the students and students will be able to easily just click on their Google Classroom. They will be in one location. And then lastly, the teachers have received professional development about posting the Zoom link to the class at the very top of each Google Classroom, and it will stand there as a banner, right? So it will be at the top always, and it will always be that one Zoom link for that class. So it won't change daily. A student will be able to just use that one Zoom link. It will be at the top of the Google Classroom in a banner, they can click on that Zoom link, enter their classroom each day. And as someone said earlier, because we have much more control in Zoom, students can't enter the class unless the teacher is there. So a screen would just pop up if they pop in early, you know, you're waiting for your teacher to start, your host to start this, this class.
Thank you, Ms. Dendez. And just, just a final question before I turn the floor back over to Mr. Alper. Relative to kind of, by the way, to our new family with a fifth grade student, welcome. You know, we welcome you to West Orange, we know that you'll, you'll have a great experience here. You know, one of the great things about the, about our school communities are they, you know, they're very, from my perspective, very welcoming. You know, and, and so my, you know, you are absolutely, I would invite you to call me first and foremost. I could, I'd be happy to engage in a, in just a conversation and kind of give you the lay of the land, answer any questions, and then direct you to anyone that could perhaps help you. I think the building principal is a great starting point, the, the school guidance counselor, getting connected with the school PTA. And, you know, some, you know, families within the school who, who you can begin to network with. So, but if you'd like to start with me, I'm happy to engage in a conference call and just get, get acquainted and, and guide you how I may. So we, again, we welcome you and, you know, there's a lot of resources to, you know, to, to help you get started. And that is, that's all I have, Mr. Alper.
All right, thank you. Was there any information from you or Ms. Dendez on the Google backgrounds?
Ah, yes, yes. Yes, so from what we've learned is, is that, that on Chromebooks, you're actually not able to do a Zoom background. So Mrs. Dendez and I had a pretty lengthy conversation about this one day this week. And because we've obviously said as one of our expectations is, is that students have their cameras on. And so the idea is, is that if a student parent, for whatever reason, felt, did not feel comfortable with that, they should absolutely at the onset of the year not put themselves, their child, in a situation where they, they felt uncomfortable. We will interpret a camera, a student present, but a camera off as something that we need to engage in a a sensitive kind of dialogue with that parent. And what we're hoping that we're able to do, they, right, so, so I mean, is that, you know, in those cases, is that we can work collaboratively with the parent to identify a space in the home that ultimately, that they're comfortable with, like I'm behind a blank wall here. You know, and there's some strategies that we're looking at with green screens. But in the end, we want people to be comfortable. And, and, and we want to be able to engage families in a, in a confidential, sensitive dialogue to say, okay, we understand. How can we maybe work with you to, to, to kind of remedy that? And if we can't, well, then ultimately, you know, a decision can be made whereby we would allow a student to keep the camera off. Understanding that that puts the student at a disadvantage, right? Because we can't monitor the student, we can't pick up on cues from the student. And it raises the possibility that the student might be engaging in some off-task behavior. However, if it were the prerogative of the parent and we weren't able to kind of work with that parent to get the student set up in a situation where they felt comfortable with, we agreed to the camera being off, but then the student was encountering difficulties and not, not performing at a certain level, then obviously we'd have to, we'd have to re-approach that conversation. But we want to be sensitive, we are also looking at some other strategies that we can work with parents on for that.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I want to thank everybody for their comments, especially for the appreciation for everybody who's been working so hard on this, on the staff this whole time. It means a lot. Working through the couple of notes I had, Ms. Paul, thank you very much for your great feedback, that was really fantastic to hear. Mr. Kesselman, as far as in-person meetings go, yeah, as long as kids aren't able to get back to school, at least on a virtual, on a hybrid basis, we're going to keep having our regular meetings right here on the internet. What's, what happens is all those meetings are set way in advance at the very beginning of the year. So it's a manual process to overwrite. As far as I know, it's a manual process for somebody to overwrite each one of them and make it a virtual meeting as it comes up. So as they come up on the calendar, they tend to show up as real in-person meetings, and then they get switched later. And I think I had another note here somewhere. Ms. Davis, I wanted to thank you for the kind words, and I don't think I got your last name down, but Telica, welcome, welcome to West Orange. And we're glad to have you as part of the community.
Mr. Alper?
Yes, sir.
I, I, there were two, if I may, there were two questions that I realized I didn't address. And then I, I'm going to lateral the ball to Mr. Calavano for the final, the final salvo, if you will. So MiFi, we, we, we do have a number of devices. And there is a process by which, you know, and on the, the letter that went home and in the guidebook for requesting either technology assistance, that could be a broken device, it could be the needed for a device, whether it be a Chromebook or Wi-Fi. I think if that is daunting to a family or a parent, you know, the, the building principle is always a great touch point for that, to convey that, that need. And then we'll, we'll get it out to you within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. But we do, in fact, have several hundred of those devices that we are ready to deploy if necessary. And we have, we've been getting some requests on that and getting those out. As far as the sidebar, just to address Mrs. Mordecai's question. So, so that position is actually the last of the central ops cabinet positions or senior administration that resides within the W O A A Association. While there are other members of that association that in title are directors, they reside within the organizational structure below the central office level, for lack of a better word. And so that, that particular position, the director of Buildings and Grounds, was the last kind of what should have been an unaffiliated position that was, that was removed from the Association, and that was done in collaboration with the W O A A. There are, there, there were some factors that contributed to that. However, those are confidential personnel items, which, you know, would not be appropriate to comment on in public. Mr. Calavano, anything I've left out on that pertaining to the sidebar, and then I'll lateral the ball relative to the bond refinance?
Regarding the refinance, Attachment fourteen actually belongs to Resolution number five. We actually have an opportunity now to refund some of our outstanding debt. Just think about your mortgage, when the interest rates go down, you want to go refinance and save, you know, your, your payments. Well, we had the same opportunity with our outstanding bonds. The bonds that we're going to refinance or refund, the average interest rate somewhere around three point three eight percent. The, we're hoping that the projected rate will be one point seven zero. That will yield us a seven hundred and ten thousand dollar reduction in our debt over the next eight years, or eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars per year for our debt service. So it's definitely a positive thing for us and also a required thing by the DOE if we want to continue to receive state funding. So this will allow us the process to, you know, to begin the process.
Excellent, thank you. All right, moving on, up next, let's move some policies. Now, first, we have the second reading and adoption of the Non-Discrimination Equity and Cultural Proficiency Bylaw. and Cultural Proficiency Bylaw. I think what we've got now in front of us, Dr. C, do you want to lead into this? I was gonna say that, you know, what we've got in front of us is the product of a lot of great work and I think we're really proud of it. I think we've cleaned up, uh, the remaining typos, um, and we can have a discussion as to what folks have.
Yeah, I mean, the, the only thing I would, I, I'd frame out is, um, use that and kind of tee up for the board is that at our last, um, work session, we, we were kind of deliberating over the bylaw versus the policy, um, uh, you know, premise. And I think the board felt, uh, pretty strongly that you wanted to keep this a, as a bylaw, as kind of like an overarching kind of foundational statement and document. And so, you know, we shared that perspective with Board Counsel, um, to understand if we're creating any kind of a, for lack of a better word, a liability to have something that might have smacked like a policy as a bylaw. And, um, so Board Counsel did a great job of providing some guidance and kind of wordsmithing of the bylaw, so it, so it reads like a bylaw. And I think, you know, my read of it in the most recent version is that I think it's a, I, I'm really, really happy with the, the end product. I think it's, you know, just from my humble opinion as the superintendent, I think it, it serves the purpose for which the board had originally intended. So, um, with that, I would turn it back over to the board.
All right, great. Um, I think we handled this like we do anything else, so we would, uh, motion and then we would have a second and then we can discuss if there's any discussion. So may I have a motion for this policy, this bylaw, sorry?
Oh, moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Um, we started it this way, so we may as well. I think we'll do the other two together since they're linked, but this one's on its own and it's a bylaw.
Mr. Calavano, I'm sorry, you're muted. Thank you.
All right, uh, any discussion on this? All right.
Yes, are we going in order or just?
I'm just waiting if anybody wants to jump in, go for it.
So I am delighted, I'm satisfied, I'm pleased, I, um, I'm, I'm flipping out that we were able to make this a bylaw, because I was, I was very intent on seeing that happen because I wanted this to be, um, something that endured, that it wasn't a policy but a bylaw, so that this is how we do our work, this is the lens through which we, um, conduct the business in the district. I especially like Part C, um, the definitions. I had talked about microaggressions last time. So here we're talking about personal characteristics, cultural proficiency, discrimination, equity, implicit bias, microaggressions. I think it's very clear, uh, for everyone to understand what this is about and what the intent is for this bylaw. And I just want to add, um, this thought, that I think it would be a wonderful thing if, if this board, as an example, uh, to the rest of the district, that we scheduled a workshop for ourselves, um, on equity and inclusivity. And so I'm throwing that out to my fellow board members that I think it would great, be great for us to learn more about implicit bias and microaggressions, so that we're sure not to make them, um, whether intentionally or unintentionally. So, I, I am very happy with our work.
Agreed, anyone else?
Uh, yes, thank you. You beat me to the unmute button, Ms. Trick Scales. Uh, I, I just wanted to say about this that I think, um, thinking about it as I reread through the, uh, policy again, um, I believe that this will be, um, uh, one of the most, if not the most, uh, the act that I'll be most proud of, um, for having been a member of this Board of Education. And so I just wanted to, uh, thank everybody for their hard work on it, to the community for your feedback on it as we went through iterations. I think this is, uh, something really important that we've done for the board and for the district. So, uh, uh, thanks to everyone for your hard work on it.
Right.
Yeah, I would just echo that, um, this was truly a collaborative, um, process and I just want to thank my fellow board members. I think we all learned a lot, um, just coming to the table and even developing, in developing it. I think, Ty, that's a great idea. We have to do it in the corporate world, we go through implicit bias training and, uh, unconscious bias training. So, um, as a Board of Ed, it's probably a great, you know, something that we should definitely consider doing. And I think it might be something that's in one of our goals, so, um, definitely, uh, support that. But I just want to thank my fellow board members and Dr. Kesskon for leading us through this and, and putting this out there. I think it's a great accomplishment, um, that we had for this year.
Thank you.
I echo my colleagues here on the board and, um, I agree, it's one of the things that I'm most proud of. I committed to myself this past summer to do my own work in, um, non-discrimination equity and cultural proficiency, and I've been doing a lot of reading around, um, these issues. So, um, I would love to host a workshop for us, I think that's a great idea. And, um, I hope that this is a legacy piece for all of us and it's something that will guide, um, not only the five of us here, but those, um, members of the board, um, in the future. So, thank you and appreciate all the work everybody did to get to this point today.
Agreed. Um, you know, I think it's a super important thing that we're passing. I think it's, uh, surprising that there are so many other districts that don't have anything like this on the books and I'm glad that, uh, you know, we're out on the lead on this. Uh, one of the things I really like is actually, uh, starting on page four, there's an awful lot about curriculum and being, uh, you know, a culturally responsive curriculum in here. And I think, you know, a lot of this, uh, you know, reflecting back, Dr. Kesskon and I and, uh, Ms. Scales, I think you were there at the time too, uh, we were talking to some students at the, uh, King Day Scholarship Dinner back in January. And, uh, I think a bunch of us were there and, you know, the, the conversation was really about how there's some real myopia in some of our, uh, social studies curriculum, especially when it comes to black history that's not just about enslaved peoples. And, you know, this, a lot that's in here really goes to the need to expand that curriculum and modernize it and update it and, uh, move forward. In terms of training, I spoke to school boards today, as it turns out, and, uh, I think we're on track to set something up with implicit bias. At the very least, they're looking to see if they offer something, uh, on microaggressions as well. But, uh, Vince DeLucia, who's their scholar and residence there at school boards, who a lot of us have met at trainings before, does that, and he's a former superintendent himself. So I think, you know, it's a, it's a great fit for doing a board training on that and he's done these for individual boards. So, with all that, uh, Ms. Calavano, let's vote.
Yes.
Ms. Rothstein.
Yes.
Ms. Tony Cliff.
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. All right, and next we'll take them together. May I have a motion for the next two policies up for second reading? Restart and Recovery Plan and Remote Learning Options for Families.
I'll motion.
Second.
Any discussion on these? Seeing none, Mr. Calavano.
This is Mark Linger.
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein.
Yes.
This is Tony Cliff.
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. And next, may I have a motion for our policy on first reading, Restart and Recovery Plan, Full-Time Remote Instruction?
I'll motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Calavano.
This is Mark Linger.
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein.
Yes.
This is Tony Cliff.
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. All right. Next, may I have a motion for Personnel Items 1 through 7 and the Addendum?
So moved.
And seconded.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. Calavano.
This is Mark Linger.
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein.
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff.
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. Next, Curriculum and Instruction, Items 1 through 3, may I have a motion?
So moved, second.
Discussion? All right, let's vote.
This is Mark Linger.
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein.
Yes.
This is Tony Cliff.
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. Next, Finance, uh, Special Services Items 1 through 2 and Business Office Items 1 through 8, may I have a motion?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I know, just to thank you for the, uh, for the explanation on the bonds.
Yes.
That was gonna happen here in any case, right?
Yes, it was.
Can I just?
Yeah.
Oh, could I just ask a question about the stipends for the buildings and grounds? About what that's all for?
Attachment sick.
As you see the various categories on top of the first page, forklift, Black Seal license, they're entitled to stipend if they hold one of those licenses or...
Okay, great, thanks.
It's an annual, uh, part of the contract.
And Mr. Calavano, um, they vary for Black Seal. Is that depending upon when they got it? Because I see the, the folks who've been around for a long time, it's 11:50, and those who came on in the last 10 years, it's 700.
We actually, I think, made an adjustment in the last contract.
The what?
Of the people coming in will get less than the people that were here.
Grandfather, the other, the old, you say?
The, the guys that were here long, uh, I don't know what the period of time, they were grandfathered at that rate, but then we developed lower rates.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
Okay, good.
All right. Anything else? Mr. Calavano.
This is Mark Linger.
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein.
Yes.
This is Tony Cliff.
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales.
Um, yes, going so fast, I can't keep up. I have all these tabs and I'm like, wait a minute.
President, President Alper.
Yes. And last miscellaneous, some, uh, calendar updates, uh, may I have a motion, Items 1 through 3?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right.
Mark Linger.
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein.
Yes.
This is Tony Cliff.
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. All right, next, Petitions and Hearings of Citizens, Public Comment on Any Topic at All. Again, you'll have three minutes, you'll click the button to raise your hand, and when you come in, please let us know your name and address and you'll have those three minutes to talk in any comment you, uh, topic you'd like.
Thank you very much. Uh, yes, just use the raise your hand feature. And for those still on the phone calls, it is star nine and you just have to press it once. And just a reminder for our audience that you can press the raise your hand feature at any time, you do not have to wait for the last person to speak. And Melinda Huerta, can you please follow the prompt on your screen?
Hello?
Hi, thank you.
Hi, Melinda Huerta here, uh, 17 Park Drive South. Again, I wanted to, uh, thank the, the board for their work and I did want to, um, address, uh, or bring up that, the concern of short notice. And I know Dr. Kesskon is usually really great with communication and, uh, letting people know, uh, in, in advance so that they can make their plans. And, um, and I understand the frustration of, uh, Mr. Robertson, who had mentioned earlier, um, that it's a, I feel also it's, it's a, it's an overload of information and very close to the start of school time and it can be very stressful. I know myself is, uh, with the two kids going to school and, and then two young children to take care of and then, um, other responsibilities among all of those, um, uh, among the school, learning everything that's, you know, we're going through with the schools, um, can be difficult. And I did want to ask, um, had the board, uh, set their 2021 school, um, their goals yet, um, from their last meeting that was the public meeting, but that wasn't on Zoom? Uh, we went over, um, the goals I was able to participate in that public meeting. Um, and I'm really anxious to, uh, learn what the new goals for this upcoming school year are, is, are, uh-huh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Aaron Kesselman. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Sure. I should start off, uh, Aaron Kesselman, One Galway Core, I should start off in saying thank you again for everyone who, for all the hard work you put into this. Obviously, this is not an easy time we're all living in. Um, I do have a couple of other questions for you, two. Our first one rather, Chromebooks, um, all of us who have picked up Chromebooks, I'm sure that some of those may be on the older models. If, uh, those have lagging issues, can we use backups if we bought a Chromebook just in case the school district could not provide one in time? And, um, in regards to parent, you know, I, I hear a lot about teachers being excited about having kids back, but they're not really back, are they? Um, and parents would love to have their kids back in school. I'm for one who would love to have our kids back in school. And so it's not really exciting to have my child still at my house and having to make sure and be that they're on task, um, and that I'm working and my wife is working and that we can maintain our jobs in our house. And I don't think there's a, there's a lot of that that is being answered on this. Um, and I really hope that we're moving quickly to in-person, uh, classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
That got away from me.
Uh, we have anyone else, um, in the audience who would like to speak about any issues? Okay, thank you. So, okay, this is a phone caller and the last numbers are 2088, if you can identify yourself, please.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Randy Gooden, uh, the address is 26 Beasley Street. First and foremost, I'd like to echo everyone's sentiment and commending the district on the job that they've done in terms of setting up for virtual instruction for the fall. I have one question, and it's in regard to the in-person experience, um, as it relates to students who may need to come in for testing. Are there special accommodations that are going to be made for students who have chronic illnesses, who may not be able to physically come into the buildings for testing? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. And final call, if we have anyone in the audience using the raise your hand feature or if you are on the telephone, it's star nine. Okay, thank you. Carolyn Holland, if you can follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, Carolyn Holland, 71 Lawrence Avenue. I've finally caught my breath. Um, I mostly just wanted to thank everyone for all your work. And personally, while I understand how difficult this is for so many parents to supervise their children, I am incredibly grateful to the district for working so hard to get virtual up and running. I spent the last six months being incredibly anxious because we have high-risk people in our family. And I'm really, really, really grateful that my kids don't have to go back to the building and yet I don't feel like they're going to be short-changed. And in the beginning, I was afraid if they didn't go back, they would be short-changed by being virtual. I have much more confidence and so I really appreciate that I'm able to keep my children safe, my family safe, and yet also hopefully get my children the education that they deserve. It's a terrible situation for all of us and I'm just really impressed with how hard you all worked. And God bless all of those parents out there who don't quite know how they're gonna make this work, I wish you all the best. And I also just wanted a reminder, um, that not all special ed kids are the same. And I realize that, yes, the LLD and the autism, whatever those classrooms, the self-contained classrooms do need more in-person. But there are also special ed kids who either because they're medically fragile, can't come in, or because their special need is, is different. Maybe it's mental health and they're anxious about coming in. Um, I just want people to remember not to lump all special needs kids in together. Not saying the board or the administration is doing that, but when we advocate for special needs, we have to remember that they have individual education plans because they're not all the same. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And final, final, last call. Thank you. Joanne DeSimone, if you can follow the prompt on your screen?
Hi, you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Joanne DeSimone, 3 Edgewood Avenue North. Like everyone else, I just want to thank the entire board for everything that you've done, so appreciative. And riding along of what, um, Carolyn just said, um, to about special education, but I'm, I'm taking a look at the, the booklet, um, the request for the full-time virtual instruction link. It's still bringing you to the form that says the deadline is August thirty-first. So I'm just a little confused if that timeline's been upgraded. Like I have a son in, in a self-contained class, but I'm not in any way shaped before I'm going to be ready to send him back in early October before the rest of the district is considering hybrids. So, yeah, I, I, I like that Carolyn brought that up because we have to remember that everybody's situation is different. And I don't want my son to be lumped up like that. And so if I'm immediately having to jump in and do this form, I'm just wondering what the new timeline is for that request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have anyone else at this time? Final, final, last call? That seems to be it, thank you.
Thank you. I'll just jump in first if I can. And on the board goals, Ms. Huerta, I'm expecting we're going to have those on our next meeting. We just need to, you know, punch up the writing a little bit and decide exactly, you know, what sort of levels of measurement we want to put into these so that we can see when they're accomplished. But I think what you were here for, I think that those are the basic goals. It's just a matter of, you know, getting them written in actual usable language. Mr. Kesselman, you know, just from a board member perspective and a parent perspective, you know, I agree a lot, you know, I work from home myself and for, for years I've worked from home and by myself. And, you know, since March, I've worked from home with three other people in my house and it's a whole different world. And, you know, my, my kids are much older, I think. And it's, you know, I can only imagine what a challenge it is, you know, to try to do school and work at the same time with younger children. You know, my perspective is, you know, I don't think any of us could live with ourselves really if we made the wrong call prematurely. If we went before it was safe for our kids and our staff to be back in the buildings. So, you know, I think that's a lot of what's going on right now is making sure that we've got that right equipment, the needlepoint ionization technology and everything else that's really necessary to make it a safe environment to go back to. But please know that, you know, the district's doing everything it can on every level to make sure that we get back as soon as we're able safely. And Ms. DeSimone and Carolyn, thank you. Excellent, excellent points, I really appreciate it. Doctor C, all yours.
Actually, I think you, you hit on a number, a number of the points. I think there was one specific question with regard to accommodations for testing on site. And my recommendation on that would, my, my response from my level would be yes. That if we were going to oblige a medically fragile student to come in, that we'd be providing, you know, whether it were outdoors on a day where that, that made sense. But that would be a question I would, I would recommend directing to the case, the case manager and understanding how we could accommodate your child in that regard, or whether for the time being, we would forego that testing until such time that we could accommodate him or her on site. And I think I would, you know, I would just echo Mr. Alper's statement, which is, you know, I, and I think, I think Mrs. DeMendez kind of framed it out well, which is like, you know, don't necessarily mistake our upbeat attitude as a, you know, kind of a, in, in, you know, an ignorance to the challenges, right? And particularly for working families. You know, you know, that being said, I think one of my takes on this was, in addition to what Mr. Alper said, was, you know, let's, let's, let's get good at fighting a, a, a battle on one front first, right? And I think what's made this challenging for a lot of districts that have embarked on two very complex endeavors contemporaneously and why that number of seventeen percent satisfaction is where it is, is because they were simultaneously trying to get really good at virtual instruction and at the same time implements something completely new and different, which was this hybrid. So we are very much committed to getting to this hybrid model as soon as possible. But we know that regardless of whether we were virtual or hybrid, that virtual was going to be a really important piece to that, to even making the hybrid model work effectively, right? So we know that when we do transition to that, we'll be really good at the virtual model, which will make the hybrid model work even better. But, you know, please make no mistake about it, you know, we're not, you know, we're not getting out the confetti. There's still a lot to be, you know, to be very concerned about, a lot to be very focused on, and we have a lot of work left to do. But as I've said to staff members this week, we've sort of found that port in the storm right now. And, you know, we, we know what our destination is, and that's normalcy, right? But it's a, it's a long voyage to normalcy and there's a lot of rough seas in between. And we're just trying to catch each port in the storm as we go and make that progress gradually and safely. Feel really good about where we are right now and really as a springboard to where we need to get. So, Mr. Kesselman, I'm driven on a daily basis, as is the team, with trying to get the many parents in our district what they need and what they want, which is onsite time as soon as we can. Thank you, Mr. Alper.
Thank you. Oh, there was one question in there as well about using personal Chromebooks, if.
Yeah. I mean, the default is the district issued Chromebook. But certainly if the district issued Chromebook was wonky on a particular day or went on the fritz, obviously, you know, you know, use a device that's, that's functional on that particular day. But it's, it's certainly not, you know, completely bratton to, you know, to use another device if that was necessary.
Great, thank you. All right, Board Member Reports, Mr. Rothstein, what's new?
But before I get to that, I might have missed it, but was there an answer to the question about the form with the August thirty-one deadline?
I appreciate that. The, that date should have been changed, and I apologize for that. I actually, you know, gave that directive weeks ago and I was under the impression that that had been changed. That should be, you know, as was indicated in the letter that was sent home a couple of weeks ago. And when I addressed the point of the virtual opt-out, that is, that deadline is open at this point in time and parents can continue to fill that out. You know, my thought on it is, you know, because you have that flexibility would be to do a sit and wait, you know, until you feel comfortable, unless you're one hundred percent confident that you want to do virtual, all virtual, in which case fill it out. But if you're on the fence with it, you want to kind of sit and wait a little bit and see how things play out. You have time before you're actually obliged to do that. But I know that Mrs. DeMendez is listening in and she'll get word to the folks who created that form to, to update that date. But there is flexibility there. Thank you, Mr. Rothstein.
Thank you. All right, I will keep this short and hopefully sweet. First of all, I want to express gratitude again to our hardworking administration for, I know, the late and sleepless nights and all of the stress of pulling this very unusual start of a school year together. So thank you. And then I want to give my best wishes to our outstanding teachers and staff for safety and for success this school year. And wishes to our students for an exciting and challenging learning environment, challenging in the right ways, hopefully, and not any of the unfortunate ones. And then finally to, to parents, and I'm in that group as well. This is new territory for me, it's new territory for all of us. And I'm just going to wish us a lot of patience. I love the idea that Ms. DeMendez mentioned about the red, yellow and green Post-it notes. And I'm going to run out and buy some of those because I, you know, also working from home, my daughter comes to me many times a day holding up the finger, Dad, I need, I need your attention for a minute, of course, when I'm on an important call. So those Post-its will be a great help. So thanks and best wishes to everyone.
Thank you. Ms. Trick Scales.
I just want to mention, I, I am currently working in a neighboring school district. And we opened today. And so I have a little bit of experience of what it took this summer trying to get things ready, the anticipation, the anxiety, just wondering, is this going to work? Have we crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is? Is the technology going to work? Are the kids going to be able to sign on? Will the internet hold up? I mean, it, there is so much that goes into this. And so I, I have to commend Dr. Kascone and Mr. Mendez and, and everybody. Even to have that guide, there are districts that don't have a guide. So it might be cumbersome, it may have come out late, but it exists. There is a resource for parents to go to. So I think that's phenomenal. And, you know, I, I just wish everybody a wonderful, wonderful start on Monday. Everything that could be done has been done. I, I don't think, Dr. Kascone, you all have missed anything. I think you've thought of every eventuality. And I, I just think it's absolutely wonderful. And so Happy New Year to all the students and the staff and the administration and the support staff. I, I just know it's going to be wonderful. And I just want to commend my fellow board members again that we took a huge step tonight in passing that equity bylaw. As you said, it, it will be our legacy and it's one that I think we can hold our heads high and be extremely proud of. So I thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mark Linger.
Hi, everyone. So, you know, I echo Gary and Terry. You know, I'm looking forward to a great year and I just want to commend the entire district from everyone's input across the board. You know, everyone had some sort of say and input and creative thinking and outside of the box thinking. So this was a huge undertaking and I'm excited to see how it goes next week and, and to hear how our faculty, our staff, our students and our parents, how the experience goes. I thought it was interesting that today's professional development was on social emotional learning and it happens to be World Suicide Prevention Day. So just again, you know, as we're experiencing the anxiety of this new school year and this virtual platform, that we do have tons of resources and our district counseling staff is super. We have lots of resources. And so just be sure that as you're going through this school year and working with whether it's a technology issue or emotional issues or just anything, you know, we as a community are there for each other. So I just encourage you to reach out for those resources, even if it's still called, you know, Dr. Kascone has made himself available. But anyone within the district or principals, your guidance counselors are there for you. So just to keep that in mind. And I also just want to, you know, recognize and remember that at this time, nineteen years ago, folks were getting ready for the next day and for schoolwork, whatever happened to be. And I just want to recognize the folks in West Orange, our skyline of like Eagle Rock Reservation was forever changed on nine eleven. So I just want to recognize our West Orange Police Department and our Fire Department and our OEM, who all, some of the folks that are still there today and some of the folks that have since retired since that experience, that our hearts and thoughts are with you, especially those that had personal experience. But those who didn't have, you know, it affected us all in some way, shape or form. And here in West Orange, we definitely felt it. So just, you know, our thoughts are with those folks that are experiencing tomorrow and remembering nine eleven. And I also just want to thank, you know, and, and remind our community that in the spirit of kindness, you know, things are not going to go perfect on day one. We hope for the best, but we may see some technical difficulties and whether it was the, the guide got out late. But to Terry's point, we have a guide. And so just be, you know, mindful that everyone's in this together. And I look forward to a great year and welcome everyone back and let's have a great time.
Thank you. Ms. Tony Cliff.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. Just want to wish all of our students, our staff, our administration, a great back to school on Monday. And I'm going to close with a little, I don't know, it's like a little poem that was credited to Stephanie Kraus that I think sort of sums up a lot of the feelings that we heard here tonight. It's called Back to School. Back to school this year is ideal for no one, not for teachers, not for parents. Hybrid is not ideal, virtual is not ideal. Face to face in the midst of a pandemic is not ideal. For every kid who is anxious to get back to the classroom, there is another who has anxiety about returning. For every parent who wonders, how am I going to manage this? There's a teacher wondering, how am I going to manage this? Often that person wears both titles. For every kindergarten parent who is sad that this is how their child will begin their education, there is a parent of a senior who is bummed that this is how their child will end theirs. For every person angry about having their child wear a mask, there's a person who is petrified their immune compromised family member will get ill. Life has thrown us a huge curveball, a plot twist, if you will. It will not be easy, we will be challenged, we will get frustrated. I hope we rise to the occasion. I hope we help one another. We will all need help. I hope we treat each other with grace, we will all need grace. I hope we realize that at the end of the day, our kids need us to be the light. Set the tone, see the good, take a really unfortunate situation and do our best to make it okay for them, for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, I want to welcome everyone back, students, teachers, parents. Last week, Dr. Kascone asked me if I could pop into Thursday's Welcome Back session for staff members, which I think we had, what, nine hundred or so people in that room at the time? And, you know, I just kind of was able to drop in and say a couple of words and just, you know, the, the real point of it was just how proud I am to be a part of this team that's put together such, that's done such great work this year since the spring and especially over the summer to put together this great plan for the fall. And, you know, I'm just, I'm really, I'm proud of everyone who's been part of this from Dr. Kascone and Ms. DeMendez, everybody on the central office leadership team, our building administrators and principals, our supervisors, of course, our amazing teachers who are going to be putting this on to practice, our Paris, our administrative assistants, our clerical aides, our custodians, our buildings and grounds crew, everybody who I'm sure I've left out, you know, this is, West Orange is an amazing district. We're doing great things, we were doing great things before the pandemic. We've done great things through the pandemic, we're going to continue doing great things. And I'm proud to be a part of it. So thank you, everybody, welcome back. Our next meeting will be virtual, seven thirty PM on September twenty-first, we'll see you then. Have a good night, we're adjourned.
Thank you. This is to announce that when I end the meeting, it will end for both those on and off camera and no other business will be conducted once the meeting ends. Thank you all and have a great night.